Good afternoon and welcome to this meeting of the Health and Wellbeing Board. My name is councillor Argent and I'm the Chair of this board. We just, I'm just going to give you some housekeeping instructions. There is no fire alarm plan for this afternoon, so if the alarm should go off, please could you follow the instructions of the town staff? The gents are out of that room, I believe it's on the right hand side for the women's toilet. You need to follow the corridor to the right and then to, to the left and then to the right. And do we have any apologies for absence?
David Black, Ruth Brown, Andrew Jones, Emma Latimer, Dr Zach McMurray, councillor McRooney, councillor Dawn Dale, James Henderson, Jo Horrabin, councillor Lyndis Hammond and Rob Sykes.
Thanks Fiona. And we will go around for some introductions. I will ask the people who are sitting down on the sides to introduce themselves and then the presenters of the various reports. When you come forward to present your report, if you could introduce yourself and say which organisation you are from. So we'll start on my left.
Thank you Chair, I'm Sandy Bucken, Director of Commission Development for the Sheffield Place of South Yorkshire Integrated Care Board.
Greg Vell, Director of Public Health.
Alexa Chapel, Director of Adult Health and Social Care.
Dan Spire, from Policy Officers and Support to the Board.
I'm Lee Salisbury, Clinical Lead for Health Inequalities in Sheffield and I'm deputising for Zach McMurray.
Hi, I'm Helen Sims, I'm the Chief Exec of Voluntary Action Sheffield.
And we'll go on the right hand side?
Yes, Douglas Johnson, Councillor for City Ward.
Hello, Judy Robinson, Chair of Sheffield Health Watch.
Catherine Roberts Shaw, the interim Director of Sheffield Health and Care Partnership.
Hi, I'm Sarah Jenkins, I'm with the Deputy Medical Directors at Sheffield Teaching Hospitals, representing David Black, MD.
And next to me?
Fiona Martinez, Sheffield City Council.
Thank you. Are there any declarations of interest? I think that's a no, thank you. And we have not received any public questions, so we're moving on to item four, which is a verbal update from Health Watch.
Thank you Chair, this is a regular item which we bring as a reflection of the inquiries and questions and concerns that citizens are bringing to Health Watch. And over the last quarter, that's been 500 direct engagements. The three things I'm going to say will not be a surprise, but it does give the board a snapshot of what people are worried about, what they're finding. I should say that the three things are in the critical area, but in terms of hospitals, for example, 67% of people we spoke to were very happy with the treatment they had, the way they were treated by staff. So it's not all a gloomy picture, but my three things I want to pick up for the, the board's information this month. I know we've got the pharmacy needs assessment on the agenda, later on in the agenda. We have had a lot of feedback about community pharmacies, closing, suddenly not being there. And we know there are issues around skills and staff. But one of the particular things that's come out is that people do not know which pharmacy is providing which service. And it seems to me and us, if we are trying to say that pharmacies are one of the front lines to relieve pressure on GPs and because they have skills, that element of communication is really critical and at the moment it's not there. So that route to treatment is unclear. So I think there's a lesson to be learnt there. I think secondly, in terms of pharmacies, the consultation, listening to people's experiences will be a really important part of the new assessment. So I know that's been delayed for all sorts of reasons. I think getting it back on track and making sure that people and their experience is part of that assessment is important. So that's one, pharmacies. Second one is long Covid. With Voluntary Action Sheffield, Health Watch is doing a piece of work about people's access to both assessment and treatment for long Covid. And indicative findings are that the more disadvantaged you are, the less likely you are to be accessing that treatment. And the other thing we've been finding from talking to people and the things they've said to us is that people with already existing long-term conditions find it hard to get a diagnosis of long Covid. It's a bit like, you're a menopausal woman, so all this is to do with that. It's a version of that. So they're not getting perhaps a correct assessment. And I think that again, really particularly for older people, needs to be part of our reassessment of our strategy. How is that factored in? And those things that are pre-existing are not seen as a covering reason for something else. And then thirdly, and this has become almost an annual, more than that, feature of what we say, the experience of primary care, getting an appointment particularly, for many people is very difficult. And one of the things that I hadn't, just hadn't tweaked was, if you're on the phone for half an hour or longer, the cost of that, if you haven't got much money, is really critical. The really small things make a big difference. Or access only via a website, if you haven't got an IT connection or you don't know how to use it, really difficult. So those things which are in a way similar to the pharmacy point, the point I make often about communication, what does it feel like to be on the other end of a super new system that you haven't actually checked out? That, that's one thing. But also dentistry, I've been talking about this, to this board for two years. It has now been escalated up and Greg's smiling at that point because it's certainly taken some time for that to be taken seriously. We increasingly find people say they cannot get an NHS appointment for two years, which effectively means you turn a book to A&E or you do it yourself. That isn't good enough. And it seems to me, and we were talking to commissioners as well, about the emergency dental treatment you can get using 111 at the weekend. But guess what? Only have a dental problem between nine and one o'clock because outside those hours, you won't get treatment. That seems to me not to be acceptable. So three things, pharmacy, long Covid and primary care. I'm happy to take questions from anybody.
Are there any questions for Judy? Greg?
We agree with all Judy. Just a brief observation, sort of there's a big push in lots of spaces around digital solutions to this, that and the other. I'm not buying for what it's worth. I think digital is a way to get good reach reasonably quickly, but we just don't know whether it leads to better outcomes. And I agree with you, it leaves lots of people behind. And I encourage lots to be somewhat cautious and perhaps somewhat cynical, but I'm well known to be cynical about the sort of the digital as an automatic answer. It can be immensely powerful to get to places that other mechanisms can't reach, but it can leave things, can leave people behind. So an observation and an agreement rather than a question.
I mean, I agree with that. And I think if you don't test it out properly, you don't know. And we're not testing it out enough.
Are there any other questions? Thank you Judy for bringing that to, to us. And you know, the, you know, the long Covid item is very close to my heart. So yeah, let's push it up the agenda. Thank you. Greg?
One suggestion, long Covid is quite close to my heart. I don't think we've quite got our story as a city straight yet. I think there are some really, really good aspects to the story, particularly the NHS issue. I took your point with regard to the inequality of access. I don't know the extent to which employers and the benefit system are actually in the right space with regard to long Covid. Some will be, some won't be. And I do think it'd be worth the board having a sort of a poke in that space. What's the current state of play with regard to the totality of long Covid? Not just the NHS bit, but the totality. And I'll, I'll mention it at the end on the forward planning discussion, but I do think we should get into that space.
Thank you. I can give you a good, good results story, but then again, that's access. Okay, item number five, the Race Equality Commission Report.
So I'll start whilst Adele gets set up. Apologies in advance, you'll be hearing a lot of me droning on today, apologies, but, but there are lots of other people who are going to talk way more eloquently than me. The paper summarises the rec. I think it's a given that organisations need to have a robust organisational response across all of the areas, health and care, crime, criminal justice, employment, et cetera. The purpose of the paper is what's the, what's the role of this board with regard to the citywide response beyond the organisations per se? Over to Adele and Hamira.
There we go, yeah. As Greg has just said, I'm not going to go into detail on the report.
Sorry, Adel, could you introduce yourself for people watching?
Yeah, I'm Adele Robinson, I'm the Equalities Engagement Manager in Sheffield City Council and this is my colleague.
Hi, pleased to meet you, Hamira Ibrahim, working as an Equality and Engagement Officer.
Yep, we have been supporting the Race Equality Commission for the past two years. And I just wanted to note that both the report and all of the hearings and all of the evidence from the commission is actually on the council website if people want to go and look at it. I am assuming that people have read the report today, so I'm not going to go into it in too much detail. But just to say obviously that race and racism are very significant factors impacting on people from Black, Asian and minoritised ethnic communities living and working in Sheffield. And that the level of inequality and negative impact impacts on the whole city and it holds people back. It impacts on their health and wellbeing and it stops obviously everyone reaching their full potential. But this report, I think, is an opportunity for real change and I'm hoping that the board will take the opportunity. There are six key themes and obviously an overarching theme of becoming an anti-racist city. We've also been working on, and the mayor in particular has been working on, the legacy group. At this point, we're in the process of setting up the legacy arrangements and we're working with ex-commissioners to do that, but we're not in a kind of place at the moment to be able to announce what we're doing on that at the moment. What needs to happen is obviously whole city action, organisational action that Greg has talked about, and then also individual actions. We've put in the report areas to consider such as board membership diversity, specific actions in relation to the strategy, community involvement, and that's one of the kind of, it links to the next item on the agenda, system leadership, data and intelligence. And then we've got some key questions that we wanted the board to focus on. So that's my brief overview. And then if we could move on to the key questions we're asking here about the role of the Health and Wellbeing Board in taking forward the report. Thank you.
Thank you Adele. Are there any questions or comments from anybody?
Plenty, no questions, plenty of comments. For one, I'd kind of recommend the board take as read that we accept the recommendations of the rec. I'm hoping that we don't need to repeat that, but I'd say that was read. One comment, as I'm acutely mindful of the, this isn't a problem, this is, that will be solved by a big plan, a 300-page plan with 474 actions. There's something about living this, hearts and minds, cultures and all of that kind of stuff. Easy for me to say, hard to enact. The second observation I've got is, is about diversity. This is a whiteboard by and large and we need to reflect on that and that's not okay. It is as it is, but we need to reflect on that and address that. And that may be, there may be some, some answers that we can go there. Would make a point, this is a conversation about ethnicity, it's Race Equality Commission, but ethnicity is one aspect of equality, so we can't forget the other aspects of equality as well. Again, taken, taken as read. And so my last point and observation would, would be around sort of, board members have to commit to push their own organisations and the constituencies that are represented, if they're not individual organisations, to reflect deeply on and execute the spirit of what was in the rec, if not the 744 recommendations that are within it, because that becomes a management exercise. And I think this is a cultural exercise, not a management exercise, though there is some management activity needed. My thoughts.
Judy?
Thank you. First of all, very much support the ideas and the findings of the report, so thank you for that. But I wanted to ask, in relation to health particularly, whether somewhere there is some detail of specific things. So for instance, Health Watch is doing some work on the experience of Black women in terms of maternity services. It would be really helpful to know if there are other things of that kind that we could pick up on. And maybe I've just missed that, but it'd be really useful to know. And then the other one was on the fourth question about the protective characteristics. I'd certainly support that broad view of picking up those wider issues as well.
Can I just bring in now Shahida, who is, who was a Race Equality Commissioner and is coming for the next item. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Hi everyone, I'm Shahida. I'm the Chief Exec of Faith Star, but I was also a Commissioner on the Race Commission. In regards to your question around maternity, there has been other work done in the city around the setup of the Maternity Cultural Forum that came out during the work that we did in Covid. So there has been aspects of that that has been picked up. I think one of the gaps has been is joining up all these different pieces of work across the city. I think that's going to be quite key. And then, sorry, what was your other question again around?
Well, I'm saying maternity is a specific, a specific, you know, I can name. I wonder if there are other specifics around health that it would be useful to draw our attention to?
Yeah, absolutely. I think in terms of health, some of the things that came out in the Race Equality Commission was about particularly around how racialised, minoritised communities were impacted on health in terms of the treatments that they received. There was different conditions and health conditions that impact particularly minoritised, racialised communities and how that impacted them and their access to service. So things like diabetes, hypertension, sickle cell anaemia, blood disorders and things like that. And then maternity and infant mortality as well. So I think there's been, there are key things, but these are things around health and overarching health inequalities that have been around for a long time. So they've been there, I think what Covid did was put a stark light on all of that. And the question is now is how do you want to kind of respond to that as a city? I think just really quickly also touching on a point that Greg was making around, this isn't just about race, it's also about how we as a board are going to intersectionally look at something. Because if you're a carer and you're from a Black, Asian minority, minoritised, racialised community, what is your experience of access to social care? What should, you know, if you're a disabled person, you're a low income family. So that there are, it's about taking a whole person intersectional view of that as well. It's not just one protected characteristics, it's, it's how are we taking that sort of cross cutting theme as well?
Can I just add something? Just to say, one of the key things in here is also about the data and the information we hold. And something that came up across time and time again was, we don't always hold the right information. We're not always asking the right questions. So sometimes we don't know the impact because we don't have the data on it. And I think that's some, we do hold things geographically and tend to do in relation to health, but sometimes not as much in relation to protected characteristics. And even obviously in relation to ethnicity, it's more than kind of looking, and the report is very clear on this, more than looking at, you know, Black, Asian, minoritised ethnic communities as a whole and more about individual specific communities and the impact of specific conditions on specific communities.
Thank you. Douglas?
Yeah, sorry, I'm just going to ask about timelines. So clearly with all the organisations in here, there's a lot of work to be done on the report. We've got the report now, there's a lot of information in there. Between us, we've got lots of data, so there's plenty to work on. And I'm sure each organisation will be getting its action plan to, what it can do to, you know, aim to remove the racial disparities in the services and staff issues and so on. But I just wonder if we can streamline when all our organisations are going to do that? Because I think for me it'd be helpful if, you know, it's supposed to be saying, you know, the council is going to, you know, bring back a report and have it discussed in, say, February and in next September. It'd be good to streamline that with the other anchor organisations. So perhaps as a city, we could come together and we'll have some clear progress or awareness of lack of progress by certain points. So I don't know if anyone would be prepared to take that away and see if we can just streamline some work on the action plans? Just throwing this in as a suggestion, I don't need that to know.
Want to respond to that?
I can respond to that to some extent in that, yeah, we need a demonstratable timeline to demonstrate to the city after having done this commission that we're actually working towards achieving some of the things, some of the recommendations in that. But that doesn't just require a verbal and sort of mental commitment from organisations. It's also going to require resources and people capacity because this work isn't going to happen just because we've got an aspiration. This work is going to happen because we change the culture in our organisations, how we put resources to do that. So yeah, I think in terms of timelines, it's going to be how we pull forward together as a city, but putting some deadlines on it or, or at least some milestones, might be a better word, that will then say to people, well, you've got to show something at a certain time. So yeah, it's a good suggestion. The question is, what's behind the suggestion in terms of resources?
Can I just say, we will be working with city anchor institutions on the timelines as part of their legacy work, because obviously there is a commitment in these actions between 20, well, 12, 24 and 36 months. So I know the council's kind of action timer, that will be going to strategy and resources within the council. But obviously what we can do is work with anchor organisations to make sure that we have got all of the timelines together on, on that going forward. But I think one of the questions we kind of wanted to, I wanted to look at today is about what Greg said about what as a board can happen and what action can take place. And it may not be able to, it may not take place within the board setting. It might be something that we have to do outside of board and have those conversations because there are a lot of actions in here and bring something back, but especially on things like board diversity and other aspects.
Thank you. Are there any other? Greg, I want to say something too.
So I agree with Douglas on the sort of the streamlining, the, the, when we collectively hold our feet back to the fire and we must as a minimum within a year from the publication of the thing in the first place, should be absolute minimum. Easier said than done in terms of coordinating, the orchestration of coordinating that across a range of big and small organisations, but we should do that. Arguably, the only places to, to hold the accountability for the citywide response are the partnership boards, so the Sheffield Partnership Board and this board. So we have to be responsible for that. I don't think we can resolve the question of how in a 15-minute conversation. So I suggest that we, I know I'm going to have to do this, but go away and form a longer discussion amongst a group of people who are on the board to, to do the specifics of the how. We will each have to commit our organisations to some specified actions. They're going to have to be the sort of high-level leverage point actions and the sort of points of hearts, minds and culture, as opposed to the what I'm going to do in first part next Tuesday type of actions. But we're going to have to do that and I'm happy to commit to trying to organise such a thing when I'll tap various people on the shoulder.
Thank you Greg. And it would be good if we can have a discussion and have like a timeline as to when we do that so that it doesn't get pushed back by other urgent work. Yeah, I, I was wondering, if you don't mind, as a chair, I was wondering whether we can put also kind of a timeline on diversifying the membership of the board, rather than every meeting I've been to, we've been saying how non-diverse all the meetings I've been in, you know, to do with the portfolio for, for health. It would be good to actually say that we actively are going to make the board more diverse by a certain time and we really work on it, rather than just say, yeah, it's not a very diverse board, it's mostly white, middle-class men, women, a few women. And just do it, rather than every meeting repeating the fact that we're not very diverse. So could we kind of make a pledge that we are going to become a more diverse board?
Yes, but I don't agree with you on the men point, more women than men, but, but I agree with you on the white point definitely. So yes, I'll add that to my list of things to do in said workshop is the specified timeline.
Danny?
Just to add to that, we've got the terms of reference following the review board on the agenda later. I think we can maybe pick that point up during that conversation because I think we have some specific opportunities in that space.
Brilliant, thank you. So can we move on to, oh, can we accept the report and noted recommendations? Is everybody happy with that? Yeah, brilliant. And we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is number six, learning from community engagement during the Covid-19 pandemic.
I'll intro very quickly while Sarah Shahida, I think Dan and Colin set up. So again, apologies, me talking, doing the setup. Took a while to do the necessary reflection on how the, the learning from the engagement with communities during the course of the pandemic. It was a difficult time, we all know that. A lot of amazing things happened and the job now is to lock in some of that amazing and routineise it, make it the norm. And it wasn't, there were lots of difficult conversations that were had. They don't, let's not pretend that these were some easy conversations. A lot of difficult conversations were had. And I think Sarah, are you leading off to talk us through? Dan's leading.
So I'm just going to say a few words to start this off, to put it in the context of the board. First point is just to remind members of the board that this thing, that Health and Wellbeing Board has a responsibility to engage with the public in the development and implementation of its strategy. We've had some discussions over the last couple of years about the board's role in that. I think there's been some reflection that the board hasn't done it as well as it could have done in the past and it's something it needs to improve on. One of the things that came out of those conversations last year was an agreement that the board should seek to establish the role of an engagement coordinator to kind of do the job of knotting together all the work and also thinking through kind of an approach to what should happen and to, to engage with, understand what's going on in the city from a health point of view. So we, we had that agreement that that role should be established, but we haven't actually had, made any progress on making that happen. A big part of that is down to the question of how we fund that, that role. So the second point, and we've, we've heard, I think, on the REC item, how trust and understanding between public services and some communities in Sheffield hasn't been good enough over the years. Some of the work you're going to hear about that happened in Covid directly addressed that issue and, and did it really very successfully. I think the final point on this is that some of the issues that we're sort of going to hear about here have also been addressed in other spaces, specifically in the Sheffield Partnership Board space. So there's a question, as you're sort of thinking this through, about the potential to cite this conversation in a slightly bigger space and maybe access some economies of scale that, that might be available. I'm going to shut up there and hand over to Sarah and Colin to take you through the work that was done.
First test, press the right button. Hi, I'm Sarah Hepworth, Health Improvement Principal and I work in public health in Greg's team. So we set up the Vain Public Health Group on the 2nd of July 2020 and it was in response to the disproportionate impact that we were seeing playing out locally. We wanted to understand community needs and to see if it was the same as what was happening nationally in order for us to respond effectively. We had over 25 organisations from Black-led organisations come to the group and it was a real partnership approach. It was led by myself and Shahida, from, myself from the City Council and public health and Shahida from Faith Star, as you've heard earlier. And it was also attended and worked with lots of collaboration between NHS partners across the city and also Health Watch had representation on the group. We did more than 100 hours of collaborating and listening and lots of difficult conversations, as Greg said, sometimes harrowing. And it was really important that we had those conversations in an open and honest and transparent way. And that was how we built the trust over time. And we moved from, in July, a very, very difficult place to by Christmas. We had built those connections and people felt that trust had been rebuilt to a point. And again, that's moved further as the group's gone on. The partnership approach was critical in terms of, as you all remember, that we needed to be working from this on a colossal effort across the city as we were. And that meant around prevention, also vaccination and all of the communications work, which was significant. At times, we had over a hundred people attending vaccine hesitant conferences, just to give you an idea of how much work was going on. The focus was really important on action. The group very much made plain to us that they've heard this all before, they'd had promises, and we absolutely wanted to see action. So it was really important that we got leaders in front of the group in terms of how we would take things forward, city leaders, and also demonstrated how we had taken back information and acted upon that. And we saw that through commissioning, through grant funding and also through the organisations being heard, and they felt that they'd been respected and that they had been listened to, which hadn't always been the case in the past. The challenges now really are around the fact that key staff are returning to posts. Obviously, we're back to business as usual, so this is a really critical group. The organisations themselves have been pulled on the fence, they're vulnerable, so it's at a critical point and we need to think about how we go forward with the group.
Hi, I'm Colin Havard, I'm Community Development Coordinator at the City Council, and I lead on the Community Champions Programme. We created this at the beginning of COVID as a peer engagement project. It was something we picked up from work that our voluntary sector partners had already been looking at about how do we listen to what our communities needed? And so we ended up with partners of eight different organisations, nine including a coordinating organisation, aimed at areas where we knew that COVID or certain vaccine take-up was an issue and the communities were impacted more by COVID. And the champions, who are volunteers, are told to go out and talk to people that they know, that they know the name of, really not strangers, because we need them to have a relationship of trust and one where they can go back afterwards and either give them more information or find out what happened. So to date, we've had twenty-five thousand contacts in about eighteen months. Some of those are very short and sharp and some of them will lead to ongoing conversations about COVID, but also increasingly about other health issues. It only took about six to eight months of going out to try and talk to people about COVID before we realised we couldn't talk to people about COVID because that just made them run away. And so we had to broaden it into other topics. And so we tried to use an asset-based approach, which is that we encourage our champions to talk about the topic that the person wants to talk about, not necessarily the topic you want them to talk about. And that you can get to your topic eventually. So you can start talking about the football all you like or whatever it is, you know, and eventually you can come around and go, so have you had COVID yet? And then you can start a conversation about what that means. So we've expanded it now to eleven areas. We're looking to turn it from a project into an ongoing programme of work so it becomes business as usual, still embedded in that relationship of trust, still with people talking to their friends and family, but listening to them as much as they are telling them things. When they listen, we can then work out why aren't you therefore getting your COVID jab or sorting out your teeth or whatever it is the issue is. We need to understand the why, not just keep telling you to do it. And so that's where the Community Champions are at the moment and hopefully we'll have to continue with them.
Hi, everyone, I'm Shahida. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about the impact of all of this work. I just want to just take a step back. When COVID hit in March, the situation that was on the ground in terms of our racially minoritised communities and the impact of COVID, what triggered all of this was the disproportionate number of deaths that we were seeing within that community. And the colossal effort that was needed across the city and one of the initial reactions from every single institution in the city was where are our communities, where are these people, how are we going to get in? On the flip side of that, the communities themselves, without those institutions, were trying to respond to the issue of COVID at a grassroots level, whether that was through mutual aid groups, whether that was through action groups that they set up themselves, even at a neighbour-to-neighbour level. The impact of that on community, black-led, BAME-led community organisations was that there was very little coordination happening at a citywide level. Where we came into this was because we were a trusted source in the city for a whole range of people because we'd maintained community engagement and trust with organisations for more than a decade. We found ourselves in a position where we had to step into that role to kind of do the coordination, linking up with statutory services, but that also that strategic conversation as well. And as Sarah says, it, well, from March, it took us from March to July to get the group up and running. It took a huge amount of work in the background, but I think one of the things that COVID showed us as well was because all the rules went out the window, people were prepared to take a risk and because the focus was on action, things needed to happen and they needed to happen very quickly. In some ways, there was a degree of, we're just going to have to trust you to do and get on with this, whatever it is. The flip side of that was there was a fifteen-year trust deficit in communities, so you can't just kind of parachute into these communities and say, well, you know, nobody from the local authority has rocked up to your community centre for ten years, but guess what, we now need you to do A, B, C and D. So it was a huge, huge effort. Myself and Sarah and other colleagues around the table, Voluntary Section Sheffield, a whole range of other people, worked really, really hard. We had Health Watch represented there. We had various stakeholders represented in the group. The group absolutely held us to task. And it wasn't just a case of rebuilding their trust and rebuilding relationships and rebuilding partnerships, it was about also embedding their needs right in the centre of everything that we were trying to do. So on top of trying to kind of, from a kind of pandemic perspective, deal with COVID, we were also trying to deal with infrastructure issues where, you know, we were trying to almost on a, what, hour-by-hour basis at some point, weren't it, Sarah, where we were literally stitching different parts of the city together, linking community organisations with different people in different systems. So the impact of that was absolutely huge because it enabled, and that kind of brings us on to the vaccine hesitancy, without those community organisations and the work that they did and, you know, colleagues like Colin in terms of Community Champions. I think bar one week, where Leeds overtook us, bar one week, Sheffield. No, it's very irritating. Sorry, Greg.
It was only a week.
It was only a week. Sheffield was top of the league for cities outside of London in terms of vaccine uptake, and there was a reason for that. And the reason for that was we absolutely trusted the community organisations. We were dealing with misinformation around COVID and the vaccine, not just at a local, national and international level. We've had communities getting information from, you know, internationally and we were trying to respond to that. We also then worked really hard to commission a grants process that enabled them to get COVID communication money. But the impact of that was for very, very little resources, the return on investment was so huge that Sheffield City Council had to set up a separate Google Drive because that's how much information the community's provided. And what I mean by that is things like WhatsApp, webinars, videos, flyers, outreach work. It was absolutely phenomenal and they responded to those very specific communities in the way that those communities needed. So the Somali community might have needed a different response from the Yemeni community, from the Pakistani community, Bangladeshi, Indonesian, you name it, whatever. And so that had a significant impact. But what it showed us was that our communities have got a network at a grassroots level that we don't often use as an asset because we haven't done that community engagement bit. So part of the impact of this is how do we retain, how do we maintain and how do we honour that work? Because actually, they did it with us, but they didn't have to do it. They literally could have turned around and said to us, you haven't been here for us. But because they, we created a space in which, I think we used a methodology that we developed called Listen, Learn and Act, which was quite interesting because we swapped the power balance in the meeting. So everybody who was a statutory partner, doesn't matter who they were, weren't allowed to speak. It was just the community. That was interesting, Colin, some people, yeah.
That sounds really brutal. It was important at the start.
It was.
In terms of shifting that power balance, obviously, as we went through, people were contributing as necessary.
They were active participants, but it was also listen to what people are saying to you, what have you learnt from it and how are you going to behave differently within your organisations? Because we literally had hours to rebuild this trust. It wasn't, we didn't have a three-year window where we could build up partnership. It was literally minutes, hours, days, wasn't it? So the question, I suppose, for the board is going back to what Colin and Dan and Sarah were saying, is we, whilst it was difficult and harrowing, we've made inways and pathways into our communities like we'd never had before. We are at risk of losing all of that if we don't commit to how we're going to maintain it. And also, now the communities know we can do it, they won't let us go back on it either. So the question is for the board is how are you going to enhance it?
So I'm not going to read this out for you, this sort of set of key points just summarised in the paper and some questions to discuss. I think it was best to open it up for questions, comments, discussion at this point.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments, Sandy?
Hi, thank you for that and the paper. I mean, it's just fantastic to hear what happened. And one of the big things, I think, that's within the paper is about the joined-up work in between each of the partners. I think Sheffield CCG, which was the organisation prior to the transition to the ICB, led a large piece of work with the COVID vaccination campaign. And I think we absolutely need to make sure that all of the partners and institutes across Sheffield are really joined up in that approach. One of your questions is to the board is to agree that engagement is a critical aspect. Absolutely, it is absolutely a hundred per cent. And I think every health and care organisation in Sheffield recognises that. And I'm looking at Catherine from the HCP in terms of, we absolutely ensure that engagement is a crucial aspect of the work that we do. But I think we absolutely need to make sure we're joined up as we move forward. One thing I absolutely wanted to point out and I think is important to flag is when we're talking about engagement is the commitment to an actual sustainable, longer-term model. And I think what we've found is that actually we've been committing short-term funding to communities and communities value that and we absolutely value what communities and voluntary sector bring with that funding to what we're trying to do and engage with in the services. But I think we need to have a commitment as institutes and partners in Sheffield to really make that longer-term and sustainable, to really make sure that future model is future-proof.
Dan?
So I'd just like to echo what Sandy, I think for me, one of the things that's really important out of this is that the work that was done in this space was something that pretty much all public service institutions in this city have benefited from. So I think that to echo that about the long-term, sustainable funding model, this is something that everyone has interest in maintaining. And I just think that it's worth emphasising that point.
Craig and then Alexis and Lisa.
Thanks, much to support. A specific point and a broader point. On the specific point, NHS England as the Commissioner of all routine vaccinations from COVID to flu and many, many beyond, not here, but there's an awkward point, the extent to which NHS England as the Commissioner have taken on board the lessons that you have, you and plenty of others, this happened up and down the country, but have demonstrated, this is how you get deep coverage in communities that basically don't access routinely available services. I worry a lot with regard to primary care and routine vaccination at the moment. We know how to do this, there's some worries there. So the Commissioner of Vaccination needs to be responsible for that. More broadly, there's some resourcing issues inherent in what you've said and then there's some ways of working issues inherent in what you've said. The ways of working, there's something fundamental about how we sort of build this way of working into the operating model for big statutory partners, the Listen, Learn Act methodology I liked a lot, but the acid test is community leaders, VCF organisations, community and faith leaders, basically need to be able to boss statutory services around the end, period, possibly with some exceptions. And there's a leap of faith that we need to take, which is easy for me to say, hard to enact, I fully accept it's hard to enact, but that's a fundamental culture and that in itself is one of the key tenants of what we call public service reform. And stats organisations need to sort of kind of enact that. Individuals within organisations sometimes do, sometimes don't, but the machine of the organisation needs to do. And Sandy's made the point about resourcing, we all know resourcing is difficult, but there's something inherent about long-term funding, largely unrestricted capacity funding to enable the sector to do what it does pretty well, actually. We've had that conversation at least once, possibly twice here recently. I don't think our machine has taken on board the lessons and I and others have to take that one on, but long-term and largely unrestricted funding is basically, it should be the standard operating model over from me.
Alexis?
So I just want to say, first of all, thank you very much for the report. I think it's really helpful and I actually thought it was a really good report and a really thorough approach. And for me, I want to say, first of all, endorse and support the recommendations, endorse and support the broader conversations you're putting on the table. I think, you know, what did also strike me though from the paper was, how do we ensure also people with a disability, particularly those who don't have communication needs, are also included within this? Because obviously for me, you know, that's really important as well. And I think that's what, for me, I'd like us to kind of think about how we build it into the programme of engagement and going forward. I also chaired the Autism Partnership Board and I'm just thinking about the conversations that we have and how we also ensure their voices are absolutely heard within this work going forward. The third point I was going to make is that within Adults Health and Social Care, one of the key things that we're taking forward is a programme of citizen engagement and citizen leadership, which is core and fundamental, as I had a conversation with colleagues in the past about how we ensure people's voices are absolutely core and how we develop and work forward in the future. Because that to me is what's meaningful and that's how we want to develop and go forward. And, you know, one of the things that people often say is, how do we know we're working, how do we know, so what question, how do we know we're getting better outcomes? It's when people tell us that we are. And so for me, endorse and support, I'd like to make, to really bring to the table is actually focus on people with disability and ensuring communication is absolutely key to that. And then third, how we could engage the work that we're doing within social care within this process as well and to find much support and foster and encourage that going forward.
Can I just respond to that because actually Emily Morton, who's Chief Exec of Disability Sheffield, she was absolutely crucial at the start of this in terms of, you know, members of our communities with disabilities and also Pauline Commandis from the Carers Centre. Again, there are key individuals and people in our city that, you know, during COVID were absolutely crucial in responding to not just how some of our more vulnerable members of the community have a voice and influence and how, you know, services responded to that in extreme situations. But again, I think it's about how do we connect all of that in a really meaningful, authentic way? Because actually, one of the things that horrified me during COVID is that in our city, it should not have fallen down to four or five individuals who were called to this city, the city should have had that approach or an understanding of that wider community across all the protected characteristics, not, you know, key advocates in the city who were snowed under as it was anyway, never mind dealing on top of a pandemic.
Can I have a quick word as well? I think that one of the things that worked for us was because we had dual approaches. And so there's the approach that sort of says, okay, who's going to come around the table, there's also the approach that says, we're going to go out to them. And the whole point of doing the Community Champions allied to what was happening in the BAME group is that we were just going out to talk to everybody and not because you've got a particular characteristic, because people aren't that simple. And so listening therefore from a community level at what those people are telling me, whether they had a characteristic or not, kind of didn't matter. But if you do both approaches, then you can triangulate the answer.
Hi, yes, thank you for this. It's brilliant, it's a brilliant piece of work and it sort of demonstrates that sort of proof of concept that when you can get communities and services on an equal footing working together, that's the sort of holy grail as to how you can really address and respond to problems. So it absolutely is the way forward. And just thinking about, because I'm interested in health inequalities and looking at what's happening around the country, as I'm sure we all know, increasingly, the understanding is that it's got to be true co-production, starting with communities. And it's based on that sort of Haslow's hierarchy of needs, isn't it? You know, if you need something really major... You know, if you need something really major, well, why would you be interested in, in something that seems irrelevant to you at that moment? And what you've demonstrated is that's the listening, not telling. And you've earned the right for people to go, right, if you listen to me on this, I'll listen to you and you're that transaction that's happened and it's built trust. So what you and your team have now got is, is such a valuable asset to this city in terms of going forward. And I think that we can't afford not to carry on doing this. That's really important. And certainly the idea of rolling it out, looking at other aspects of health or community, I think is really, really important. I'd be really interested in, there's a bit of feedback in here from the champions. Because again, you know, in, with this sort of principle, we, we need to learn from the champions for them to tell us or the city as to how it could be best to take this forward. I only got these papers late because I was, didn't realise I was coming to the meeting until late. So I, I haven't, I have read them all, but I think it said nine people had a job, nine people of the community champions had a job, yep. So that, I'm really interested in that as well in terms of that rolling programme, you know, what the, the train, you know, is, is there a proper training programme that in the end people may even get qualifications, you know, and move on? And then that will become a more attractional model for people coming in from those communities. And you can see how it can just develop. So I think that would be really important. Yeah, just the other thing I was going to say is, well, two things. One, it, it isn't, it isn't just about engagement. So when we talk about health being, you know, making sure that the big anchor institutions are practising this model of engagement, it is actually co-production and that is a bit of a cultural shift, particularly for the big organisations. So we've really got to articulate that very well, I think. And my one question is when looking at the numbers of the different conversations that happened in the different PCNs, there was a really big difference. So I'd be quite, I can make assumptions as to why that happened, but I don't know. And is that just because there's different numbers of champions in different communities? Or is it a different openness within the communities? Because to understanding those differences would be quite helpful going forward as well.
Yes, there were different numbers of champions because the champions, we didn't have the resource to do the whole city. So we were working in 10 target neighbourhoods based on the public health information we got from our public health reference group as to where we should target our resource. So the numbers are, do reflect where we put the resource realistically. We've, we've used it so that going forwards, we can show where we might put future resource and whether we need to, you know. Does that make sense to you that they were those, those?
Disproportionate funding for disproportionate need always makes sense to me. And actually, I primarily work in foundry, so you know, I'm very happy.
Judy? Thank you. A, a couple of points. Sandy and others have mentioned the role of the CCG and I would endorse that in a whole range of engagement work. We've become concerned recently about what I understand to be some proposals from the ICS about changing the communication strategy to be based less on place and more on specialities such as social media. And it seems to me that we talked a lot about engagement and that this is about a particular place. We ought not to miss that strategic change, which I think is happening. Health Watch hasn't been consulted on it, we have commented. But let's not miss that in a great, you know, hug of warmth about how wonderful it is. It could change. So that's one point. The other one is, I think some really important lessons about community engagement here. I keep remembering that there were three groups affected by COVID. We've talked a lot, quite rightly, about BME, MEE communities. I also want to think about disabled people, particularly learning disabled people and older people in care homes who have no voice, literally no voice. So I would like to see how the lessons here are rolled out or billed upon for all those communities. And I absolutely get the point. You don't talk to somebody with a label on, of course you don't. But nevertheless, the statistics tells a story and we ought not to miss that at the same time.
Is it all right for I respond to that? The first thing I, I just want to say in terms of the, the ICS, I totally agree with you on that point. And just to say, I'm also the non-executive director at the ICS and I'm taking exactly those arguments all the way up to the strategic level in terms of scrutiny and assurance, because absolutely there's so much flux and there's so much change happening at a regional and a place-based level. It's important we don't lose those lessons and it's important we don't lose sight of the things that matter to us here. So I'll absolutely continue to take that fight there. And the second point around disability and older people and kind of learning the lessons about, you're absolutely, it's not just about specific protected characteristics. Because as I said before, it's about working intersectionally. Nobody walks around with a label and says, I'm black and I'm disabled. Actually, it's about people. And one of the things that myself and Sarah have done in the Health Inequalities Group is, is about taking that person-centred approach and working in an equitable manner. And, you know, going back to colleagues' point about co-production, actually, we started off, the very first meeting, we started off with a blank sheet, which was, which was what are your needs? Not this is what we want you to do, because it wouldn't have worked otherwise. And I think those are lessons that, that we need to take forward. But I do know that colleagues in, such as Emily Morton and others from Disability Sheffield, had exactly the same approach that me and Sarah did. The question now is how are we going to take all those learnings from different parts of the system and put it together?
Thank you. I have Douglas and Catherine, but can we be succinct because we've, we've gone over the time allocated to this item? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, try and be quick. I mean, in some ways I was going to say, actually, it's, it's not new. What's really good about this is that you've got a measure that, I think you're saying that it was the highest, Sheffield was the highest of all the core cities in terms of vaccine take-up. So that's proof that this is important. But in some ways, the work isn't new. You know, getting just a few key people in communities active and just being there does the world a good. It's actually very similar to any work done on things like emergency planning. You know, so best way to combat flood resilience or dealing with floods and the aftermath of floods is exactly the same remedy of having, you know, a few key people in the community that people look to and you've got the links there. And so we come back to resources. We used to fund a lot of voluntary organisations across all our services. We don't so much now because of funding cuts. It's easy to say we should put more money into it. Question is about what we do if we don't have more money or even if we do have more money, what in to them? And we're saying it's a priority. Is it something where organisations here that do provide funding can just be a little more relaxed about, you know, the very strict criteria on which they give money, you know, the endless monitoring, the sort of, you know, target-driven things, the sort of measurable outputs? And actually just say, you know, for the amount of money we put in compared with the size of budgets, let's take a sort of, you know, a more relaxed approach to the risk on that. And really just accept that almost any money put into these small community organisations that really get out there is a good thing. You almost can't go wrong. So unless it's, you know, demonstrable harm that's coming out of some organisation, you know, maybe we can take that much more relaxed approach to build up trust and to provide the reassurance from statutory services that actually we have got the back of these people who are often incredibly hardworking and incredibly hard-pressed and, and doing huge amounts of good.
Catherine?
Yeah, I'll be really quick. So we talked about funding models going forward for this kind of work. But I think this is quite a cultural shift, as we mentioned, for some organisations to work in this way. So can we invest some time in our staff and staff development so that they understand what we're trying to get at here? So we can't just do this a top-down, thou shalt now, we're going to engage. We need to train our staff how to do that and any help you can give would be amazing. And also just the point about the ICB comms strategic change potentially. As we develop the place-based arrangements in Sheffield for health and social care, and I know Shida, you're very involved with that and Sandy, I'd like to take that into that conversation as well.
Thank you. So the report comes with some questions and some recommendations. And they are on page 10 of the big pack, if you have the same numbering as mine. Are people happy to take those? I think they're on the screens as well. Great, thank you. And we go on to the next item, which is the Compassionate City Report. Thank you.
Sorry, that's me again, guys. I'll let Nick and Sam set up and then they can introduce themselves. It should have been Eleanor's paper, Eleanor's poorly. She's watching me on telly and she's told me not to break this paper. So I shall try my hardest not to. Give you a very, very brief history. This work on Compassion Sheffield is basically ambition nine of the health and wellbeing strategy almost in its totality. Everyone reaches the end of their life with dignity, compassion. See this as a course we set three years ago, actually. The COVID pandemic had clearly got in the way of implementing that for all sorts of very obvious and understandable reasons. Was a three-pillar, three-pillar approach, intelligence-led, integrated clinical pathways and compassionate city. We're going to particularly focus on two of those this afternoon. The, the governance is complex. There've been a few bumps along the road, but certainly in the last year, immense progress. And Sam and or Nick are going to talk us through the progress and then we'll do a bit of wrap-up at the end. So I haven't rehearsed who's, who's kicking off.
Thanks very much. By way of introductions, I'm Sam, Chair Mateen. I'm a consultant in palliative medicine. I do my clinical work at St Luke's Hospice and Sheffield Teaching Hospitals. And where I'm, I'm also the medical director at St Luke's Hospice.
My name's Nick Deaton and I'm the programme manager for Compassionate Sheffield.
And we just also like to say thank you to Eleanor, who's played a major role in leading this work and supporting us in developing this process. And thank you Greg for supporting us in the introduction. Greg has covered off, I think, many of the key aspects of the conversation in that the board had supported our original paperback in 2019 around compassionate cities, around the clinical pathways and intelligent-led approach. And I suppose Nick has progressed the compassionate Sheffield process. And so what I'd like to do is, is for Nick to just to describe to us how compassionate Sheffield has evolved. And I'll take it from there.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Sam. I, I think a lot of what's already been talked about here today around cultural shift and that left shift towards addressing inequalities and being present, listening and understanding and empathising with people in their communities. I think this is a really good example of how we've made some progress around this, particularly around the context of death and loss and bereavement, which we've had a lot of in the city and we will continue to have a lot of. It's one of the few universal things that binds all of us, even though we all have an individual relationship with it and each community has a different relationship with it. So what we did really by starting off was by creating a bit of an identity for the project. So that's where compassionate Sheffield came from as a title. It's a bit of a Ron Seale name, hopefully. It's about trying to spread more compassion in the city, really. Does exactly what it says on the tin. What we're looking to do with this is stay reasonably organisationally agnostic. And that sounds a little bit wordy, but essentially it's, it's a movement really for the city. My post is hosted at St Luke's, but it goes far beyond St Luke's. And we've been working with lots of partner organisations. And essentially, one of our taglines, which was actually mentioned by Judy earlier, which is small things make a big difference. It doesn't always have to be huge change. This is about stuff that people can easily pick up and do themselves as an individual or as a member of the community. So that's some of the shaping of our identity. And one of the projects we've been working on is around advanced care planning. The quantitative data suggests that advanced care planning tends not to be done by non-white, English-speaking. I hate to define people as non, but, you know, some of our more ethnically diverse communities tend not to engage in advanced care planning. Advanced care planning, if it's done well and properly and is linked into services, that sort of emerging theme, tends to mean that you have a more controlled and better death. Because people aren't engaging in advanced care planning process, they tend not to have as good a death and they tend not to access the services. So inequalities are being driven by this inequity of services. Now, the quantitative data highlights that. But what we've been doing through community development, engagement workshops, is working specifically with the Roma, Yemeni and Pakistani Muslim community and understanding some of the barriers, really working with them, doing some of the work that sort of Shahida made reference to earlier, is actually listening and asking and bringing primary care services into that. And the idea is that we're going to be creating three separate videos in partnership with Opus Independent. And the idea is that's a, not a resource, this is an NHS leaflet that we've just translated into your language. But actually, this is a mutually beneficial, co-produced resource that is specific to each community. We've been working on the COVID Memorial Project, the stories from the pandemic. We've gathered hundreds of stories already through postcards. You may have seen some of the banners around the city, through online self-submissions and also through video interviews. That again is sort of going back to that, that's really stayed with me, Shahida, is that listening, listening to people's content. I think it's important that once we've done this work, it all goes into city archives. So it will be accompanied by some of perhaps Greg's more polished, you know, official briefings, but actually some of the nitty-gritty as well, the stories and people have experienced. People being distanced from their relatives as they've died in hospital or even some celebrating some of the positive and the community activism that came about because of the pandemic. So we're doing that process. Some of those stories will be exhibited in the Millennium Gallery next year. And we've also just finished off a grants process of granting 53 small community grants so that people can do their own memorial work, their own memorial activity. What's important to them? What do they want to remember? How do they want to commemorate it? Those that have lost, but also celebrating some of the positives that came out of it as well. Another area is talking about death, having conversations about it. Something we tend not to do very much as a society. And what we're trying to do with this is improve our emotional literacy or perhaps our competency around death. We've been running death cafes. We had a few events at Opus's Festival of Debate this year. And I suppose through this process is by talking about it more, we're more able to share and connect and support one another. And actually, it might improve our ability to then communicate our needs to services and for services to better understand our needs by having that conversation. Being a new parent recently, I'm getting bombarded with advice about parenting. But having just gone through a death of a close family member, there isn't a lot of advice. People don't talk about it. We don't share information the same way. So supporting people to navigate that through, through that process is also work we've been doing around developing compassionate companions. These are people who are around in the community, similar to the sort of community champions model, who have been given some training, which has been tailored by an organisation called End of Life Dooley UK. The idea is that we improve people's literacy with this. And we're actually working with FaceStar, SM4Cs, St Luke's and Mind in the first cohort of training some of their staff and volunteers and members of the public in the really pragmatic, simple things that happen as you approach the end of your life. How do you access the right services? How do you go through the advanced care planning process? Do you need to get your will in order? The sort of stuff that we tend not to share as a community. Death rituals and symbols. We're working with Ignite Imaginations after getting a Dying Matters grant. And we're working with the Pakistani, Afro-Caribbean, Yemeni, Roma and Somali communities and artists from within their communities to create bits of art around rituals and symbols associated with death. The idea is that each community, the artists from that community will facilitate that process. It's essentially about getting people together, really. The topic is death and it's unifying, so it speaks to everybody. But then we're going to bring all of those different pieces together from these different communities and say, everybody has their individual relationship with it, but we all share this. We all share this relationship with death. So it's about creating compassion and connections within communities, but also showing there's a universal side to it as well. We all have this in common. So some inter-community sort of compassion and opportunities for that. I'm going to stop there. There's loads of other stuff going on, but I'm probably bored you already. But we've been invited into lots of other contexts and domains. We're working around the warm spaces and welcome places. I've spoken to dementia boards, autism, adult social care, about the value of compassion. It doesn't just have to be contained within death and loss and bereavement, but that's where we've started with this project.
Thanks, Nick. One of the questions, why are we so focused on this? Why is this so important? Well, dying, end of life, the care of the dying is a universal experience. It doesn't really recognise ethnicity, disability. It, it, unfortunately or fortunately, it favours some more than others. And if you find yourself disadvantaged financially or you have learning disability and autism, for example, we know that you are much more likely to die sooner. And those disparities are things that we see in our own city and there are also patterns that we see nationally. I have heard it said that 95% of the, of individuals' times, up to 95% of individuals' times at the end of life are spent outside of health services. But our principal focus has been largely around how health can fix this problem. But people are dying all the time in communities and there are natural assets. are dying all the time in communities. And there are natural assets, community-based assets, who can contribute and support if enabled. But we're not particularly good at enabling that. But there's good evidence through the compassionate cities programme and compassionate Sheffield, it has grown from a compassionate cities methodology, that by enabling communities, we can affect where people die, how they die and their experience of dying. And so being able to use a programme like compassionate Sheffield allows us to find those assets, to build those assets, to support and engage those assets and enable people to access them. But we're not just building assets. A lot of the questions that have driven this is what is the need? Why are we doing that? Not just because death is universal, but because there are significant health inequalities in this space. And, you know, I think, but it's been difficult to articulate that. There are tools nationally that articulate it. We're actually incredibly lucky, and I'm not just saying it because of present company, but we're incredibly lucky to have such an engaged public health department in the city around this area of work. And, you know, recognising those equities and helping us get to the core of those inequities so we can start to say, well, how can we do it better? You know, we know that research suggests that lots of people don't want to die in an acute hospital setting. I think there is a sense for a significant proportion, the acute hospital setting isn't the right place for those people to die. I'm not saying it's not the right place for everyone, but actually what we lack is intelligence to tell us exactly how we can link health to care and to community-based assets and approach end-of-life care better. And we've seen that most clearly in the pandemic. I think it's really brought a clear focus for some of us in that, in this time and that space. So when we started this programme back in 2019, it wasn't just about becoming compassionate Sheffield, but it was taking an intelligence-led approach to end-of-life. And specifically, I say end-of-life and not end-of-life care, which has become synonymous with health provision. It's about how we can take an intelligence-led approach, we can understand where the need is, how we can stimulate growth. So the intelligence aspect of the work that we have been doing in the partnership has brought together what was a really strong partnership, I felt, of local organisations from Health, the acute hospital trust, from the CCG, from the council, St Luke's and other partners. And there was always room for more. It was supported by Public Health England and other teams to help us really bring together, to try and to develop an integrated intelligence function, really, to help us get better information about how we manage things going forward. That's allowed us, at the start of this progress, to assemble a pretty large quantitative dataset of deaths in the hospital and community. That's allowed us to start to look at how things work. And it's, but unfortunately, what it's revealed is that the baseline dataset in itself alone doesn't help us reduce inequalities. It starts to answer questions, but it doesn't give us all the answers we need. And if the system's to be transformed in the way that we know it ought to be for the benefit to allow us to meet ambition nine, there are also many questions that need to be answered. How many people have a good death? What is a good death? Who gets a good death? And is it fair? Could death be better if services were structured differently or if society viewed it differently? Can we make dying more cost-effective? I know it sounds hard, but it is, it is in the health setting, an expensive place to be, you know, if it's not done optimally. You know, I think the only way to understand end-of-life experience, accurately good or bad, is to add to that quantitative analysis, a qualitative look at that space. And so that is how we intend to progress the intelligence-led work to support compassionate Sheffield and to support the health sector, the care sector, approach this because it is universal. And that, I suppose, leads us to a range of different questions that we might ask.
Greg?
So I'll just briefly wrap up. Nick made reference to him being boring. Far from it. I thought that was really, really inspiring. Thank you. To give you examples, there's work that we find out, but all the time I read something in the British Medical Journal a few weeks ago about end-of-life duelers in Leeds, to which I was very grumpy. I emailed Eleanor immediately, so no, no, she said, don't worry, we have those in Sheffield too. So there's a whole bunch of great work on the ground here. Sam made a great point about this being organisationally agnostic. And I would die in a ditch about that. This has to be organisationally agnostic. It's owned by the city and lots and lots of different partners. Some bumps along the road, but this is basically ambition nine in action. This is the left shift in action. Health cannot fix this problem, by which we mean the NHS cannot fix this problem. It's cheap and cost-effective, but not free. To date, the level of funding's been about £450,000 on the public health grant. That's a non-recurring pot of money that we found within the public health grants. So if we want it, we're going to have to invest in it. And I fully recognise that's easier, easier said than done. Today, we've done a lot of burning the goodwill of partners and we can't do that forever. So if we're going to continue to do this work and there is a harder edge but difficult to demonstrate business case in this space, we need to work out how we fund it more appropriately and sustainably. And as Sam has said, the second ask is the data, basically show me the data. Some great progress, but some more work to do. I shall stop there.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Lee?
It's not really a question, but an observation, I suppose. Firstly, compassionate Sheffield. You mentioned, wouldn't that be great to roll it out across the board? And yes, you know, we all want to be part of a compassionate city and compassion itself is therapeutic in ways that go beyond health. But just that observation, really, that you talk about a good death, that's really important for the person who's dying. It's arguably even more important for the people around them. And in terms of health benefits, social benefits, a good death for your loved one has a huge impact. A bad death has an even greater impact in terms of long-term health and social impact. So yeah, it's much bigger than just the individual people who are dying.
If I may just respond to that very quickly, I absolutely agree. And there is some fairly strong evidence, if we look at older populations, that death of a loved one can actually lead to increased mortality and morbidity, particularly in the year after of the, those that are left behind. So it actually has a demonstrable impact on healthcare resources for us as well.
Alexis, then Sandy and then Catherine.
So I just want to say, first of all, thank you very much for all the work and the rapport. And, do you know, I think, I think it's such a great piece of work. And, you know, one of the things that really struck me from when I read it and I was, you know, listening to you speak is actually you're also compassionate leaders, which I think is also required in the city as well, is that leadership focus on compassionate care. And I think to me, what you're talking about here transcends actually in so many different areas. And certainly for me is what I'm really keen to do from, particularly from, you know, adult health and social care, is look at how do we build this into what we do consistently? Because I do think it's a really good approach. And I think it's absolutely about how do we support not only people to have, as you say, a good death, but also I think about their family members and carers and, you know, for those who are affected. So for me, I think, you know, I would love to have that conversation out with about how we support this and how we think about our creative way and how we can go forward. And I'd also like to thank, you know, yourselves for the, I think, the amount of great work that's really went into this project. And I heard about it, you know, in so many different places. And I think that there are so many opportunities to think about this across the piece. So it's really, but still, I'd say thank you. But also, secondly, to think about how we could work together to support what you're trying to do in longer term.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you to Eleanor, obviously, with the contribution to the report and the paper. You articulated fantastically how important this is to the city and we absolutely need to get behind it. The recommendation talks about asking the Joint Commission Committee to take it forward, but actually I think it needs to go to the partnership in Sheffield. I think it needs to go to a whole, everybody needs to be actively involved and part of this. And if it is funding and resources that are needed, I think it's everybody that needs to be involved in that and not necessarily just the Joint Commission Committee. So I think if that's what the recommendation is, I think we need to be looking wider than that and really making sure that we all get behind it together as partners.
Yeah, again, thank you for the presentation. The fact that you talked about broadening the scope and that it can fit in other areas is really exciting, I think. And there's a lot of work going on in the city around person-centred approaches or what matters to you. It comes under lots of names. It'd be really good to link the two up. I think there's a lot of learning that we could share. I'm happy to take that and pick that with Eleanor when she's back as well, if not with you two.
I just have a little comment. Oh, Douglas, do you want to come in?
So I just got a quick question. Just thinking about the funding for this, there's obviously fantastic programme work there. I didn't realise it's lumped in with the funding for this ongoing story about a Covid memorial, which seems to have ripped the nation with absolutely zero public interest in Sheffield. And I just wonder if we can get any feedback from anyone really about whether we'd better just use that sort of £250,000 or something, try to put into some really important work like you're doing, rather than a dry memorial? Don't know. Greg, you're going to speak on that. I'm just throwing that in there.
Possibly. Takes me into a nakedly political space and I'm not going to go there, definitely not going to go there in public meeting, but possibly. We probably do need a memorial of some description. But, yeah, yes.
As the Chair, I'm going to stay neutral politically on this one. I have just a little comment. Just taking into consideration the RIS Security Commission-like recommendations and the report from the, what we learned during the Covid pandemic, we cannot forget that a good death means different thing to different communities. I grew up in a different country and I came here in my twenties. So I grew up with a completely different relationship to death compared to, you know, British-born people. And that is really important because if we, if death has an impact, yes, on the person who dies, but on those who are left behind, if you are from a marginalised community and your dear one has a bad death, that has a huge impact on potentially a community that is already suffering. And, you know, so we've got to really be careful when, who's, you know, what is a death good to? You know, is it the person and the family or because it's, you know, it happens in the right setting from a healthcare point of view or a council point of view. And also, people should have a choice of where they die and where they decide to die.
If I may respond, I completely agree with you, Councillor. And I think one of the things that is we're very, very aware of is that's why we need to have a greater degree of understanding about people's experience. Counting numbers doesn't do that. There's a genuine qualitative aspect to people's experiences from different communities that we need to understand more of and that really need to drive further development in this project and how we approach end-of-life as a city. You know, my parents are first generation British, but my parents are from West Africa originally. And they have a very different experience. Engagement in advanced care planning and lots of the hallmarks of end-of-life care in health is very ethnically white-British. And, you know, we lead the world in that process. But that might articulate why other minoritised ethnic groups may not engage in that process. So there has to be a better understanding and discussion. And, you know, the intelligence, the data, where we need to focus our attention will drive that work. So, you know, I hope that we absolutely aspire to get to where you're describing, but this work feels like the right vehicle for it.
Thank you. If there are no more comments or questions, I want to move on to the next item because we're running a bit late. Housing and Health Conference Report.
Thanks, Chair. So this is me again. Sorry. Thank you to Nick and Sam. This is me again. Sorry. So, and I'll be quick on this one, I think. So the members of the board will be aware, there was a pretty big workshop a couple of months back now. Again, this relates directly to ambition five of the strategy, everyone has a home that enables their health. Board has had a few goes at housing over the years, never adequately, I think it's fair to say. It's an enormous area that spans from homelessness through to new builds and affordable, through to housing quality in different tenures and a whole range of other stuff. Board has never really, really got into this space as well as it might. So about seven months ago, we agreed we'd run a half-day workshop. We ran that workshop. Many of board members were there and plenty of others, six to seven people in the workshop. It was an experiment and style of working, kind of welcomed some specific feedback on that. My take from it, there were lots and lots and lots of opportunities around the operational and strategic interface between the space of health, care and housing, that many of which are not exploited and all sorts of wide-open goals to exploit those things. We know that housing is an enormous contributor to health, aka thereas, ambition five in the strategy. I think the recommendations of the report speak for themselves and I won't dwell on those. It's a fairly short report. I'll take it as read. So asks of the board, one-note report and endorse the recommendations. And I'll assume that's largely done as read, but it's there for the taking. I would welcome some feedback on the approach to the operation of the summit, grandly titled, and how we do these things going forward. Of note, there's one being planned around climate, so I shall come on to that at the end of the meeting. Secondly, the sort of the what we do next, I think this, the recommendations we can bring together, and there are plenty of examples, specifically, I'll name-check the work in Wakefield and then West Yorkshire, the housing and health work there. It has a person whose job it is to bring that together. If we want to go there, we need to identify a person. So I'm assuming no one will stick their hand up this afternoon and say, I've got X in my team that will be that person. But I think the statutory partners do need to work out, are we going to have a person on point to bring these things together? And lastly, to receive a report in the future, setting out how the recommendations that drew in his report to set out have been implemented. I'll pause there now for summary.
Thank you, Greg. Are there any comments or questions? I would like to keep it brief, especially people aware of the workshop. I'll take Catherine and then Douglas.
Just some feedback from the, how the workshop ran. I thought it was really good, really good conversations. A couple of things that were noted and I think are in the report anyway, but around the diversity of the group that was present on the day and the, there was a lack of kind of user experience, public voice in the room as well, which again, I think we picked up on the day and I think is in the report, but just to note it here as well.
Thank you, Catherine. Douglas?
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, really useful workshop and report there. I just wondered where we're going with this working group and if anyone's had any thoughts about how that might be put together, or if we're just waiting for a decision here on whether we think that's the way forward. I just realised that as I'm Chair of Housing, I probably ought to put myself forward for that if someone's going to do it. I mean, I'd certainly be really interested because I'm glad to see that all the people are catching up on the idea. There's a massive link between health and housing. And I think perhaps the bit we haven't bottomed out is just the scale of it in terms of, you know, well, both those aspects coming together.
Alexis?
So it was a really, really good event. So just want to say thank you to everybody who pulled it together. I think I would like to broaden out a bit further and say, how do we bring in health, housing and social care? Because if you're an individual who's very much affected by each of these issues, it will be joined up together. So I would really like to, we're going to be having an adult health and social care summit soon. And so I would really like to think about how do we join some of these issues together? And very much, you know, think about particularly from an impact on individuals, how do we, you know, focus on the improved outcomes for individuals? So is it going to be a perhaps the next step in a support to the working group? But I would just like to say it was a really fantastic event, really, really great work. And I think it would be a great opportunity for the future for Sheffield.
Thank you. And can I sort of concur with Catherine? Again, diversity. It was a really, really good, good day. Except, yeah, we would have needed to have some, like, lived experience there and more diversity. Simplicity is a bit like a theme at the moment. And Greg, in terms of having someone in post to do that, find us the money.
So I wouldn't ask for additional money. I think this is going to have to be someone who's already employed by health, care or housing, somewhere within the mix. That was exactly how they did it in Wakefield. It wasn't new money. It was a member of staff. One of our Um, um, one of our institutions will have to, uh, we can choose not to. Um, and we will continue, um, doing as best we can without someone to pull it all together. And that, that, you know, that may well be what happens. Um, but if we really, really, really want to go to town on this, it has to be someone's job to pull it together. I had a brief conversation with Janet Sharp, director of housing, she's in the, the same space. Uh, agree with you Alexis on the care, kind of taking it as read, but thank you for name, name checking it. I, I would add housing into our operational definition of integration, to be, to be brutally frank. Um, uh, and so, uh, Douglas, to answer your point, ye- yes, you are one of the, you're, in fact, you are the first person now to tap on the shoulder in terms of working out how we do whatever it is we do next. What you could.
Brilliant. Um, shall we have another, like a conversation about, that having, you know, finding someone maybe just, um, yeah.
I'd recommend that, that sort of Douglas, Janet, Sandy, I work out how we do. Uh, if, if we can identify a person to, 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 to do the necessary pulling together. I, I don't think this needs new money, new resources, working out operationally who, who's going to be on point to pull together. The plan for how we implement the recommendations, which I think stand, stand by themselves.
Thank you. That's good action there. Thanks. Um, item nine, um, um, terms of reference for the board.
So, sorry, uh, me again. I'm going to make some, do some governance now and I apologise in advance. So, um, remind you all, uh, the Health and Wellbeing Board Subcommittee of Full Council, um, has existed since 2013. Um, very, very strong reference to Health and Wellbeing Board in all of the guidance for the NHS and care system that's been released as part of the development of ICBs. Um, from time to time, board does a hygiene review of its terms of reference, ways of operating, membership, et cetera. And this is just about the end of a pretty long process of review. Done at a tricky time with big changes both on the council side of the fence and the NHS side of the fence. Uh, the board, the voluntary committee sector has kind of wa- watched with interest as that's happened. Um, so, um, the, 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 the role and function of the board is largely unchanged. Um, joint strategic needs assessment, brackets pharmacy needs assessment within that, responsibility for a strategy, AKA the Health and Wellbeing Strategy. Um, uh, NHS and care, um, integration, um, as I've just said, why stop NHS and care, why not housing? And oversight of commissioning arrangements, brackets better care for them, where they promoted it in a second. So function largely unchanged. Um, m- membership, um, some suggested shifts. Um, what we've tried to do in this is maintain a balance of lots and lots and lots of different constituencies that make up the thing called health and wellbeing, um, uh, and some of the things we've talked about today. Um, whilst making it a manageable board, not a board of 150 people, um, uh, which is difficult. But, uh, but some, so, so subtle shift in membership suggested in the paper and I worked well on all of the details. Um, governance, um, the board has always been well served by being co-chared between the, the, in, in history, leader of the council and chair of the CCG, um, uh, of late the relevant cabinet or committee chair, um, and chair of the CCG. There is no longer a CCG and there is no longer a CCG chair. Um, I'd still maintain we've been well served by it being a co-chared committee. Um, I have an outstanding question for Emma, which she hasn't answered yet, she may have given you an answer, I don't know. Um, uh, on how she would want to handle that. Um, but there's a specific question for the board. Do we want to have a single chair, AKA the current chair, or do we want, do we, do we want to seek to have a co-chair? And then there's a question of mechanics on how. Um, um, minor shifts in quorum, um, a big shift in style of meetings suggested. So we, you know, we, we've killed off the 12 meetings a year, we've now got four meetings a year and three conferences a year. And thus far, I think that's working quite well. Um, our, our ask of members is, is three or four fold. Amplify what you hear, challenge where necessary and add different perspectives and different, di- 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 different, different, different voices. Use, um, what you hear to add your voice and influence in different forums and add value to help solve wicked problems. So the, the ask of board members is largely as it was. Um, so, um, que- questions for board are, uh, welcome some guidance on the single or co-chair point. Um, uh, and the, and whether or not the board agree with the proposed terms of reference changes, which is there in all of its track change, technical glory i- in the reference to the paper. And if agree, then, then I presume it's you Angela, uh, make a recommendation to full council because we're a subcommittee for council. Stop.
Okay. Any thoughts? Dan?
Just to add to what Greg's saying, I sort of made a reference to this item earlier in the meeting. And there was a brief conversation about diversity of the board. One of the things we've put into the terms of reference, obviously recognise some of the membership of the board is set. It identifies specific individuals or specific posts and we don't have a choice about who those people are going to be. Other places on the board, we do have a choice. So one of the things we put in is to insert a specific recruitment exercise where we do have an option to be run by the board steering group. And with the board's sort of acceptance, we'll try to use those to explicitly increase diversity around the board table. I just wanted to flag that with you specifically.
Thanks, Dan. Um, from my point of view, I've already kind of discussed this with Greg, um, whilst the, the paper was being prepared. I am very keen on the idea of co-chairing, I think it's worked well. I mean, not, I, I've, I've experienced it last time and I think it's, it's really important that it's like a shared kind of board. Um, and it's a partnership. Um, so I would be very keen personally of about sharing the, the chair and have it in our term of reference, but I'm open to other people suggesting otherwise and give me a reason for that. Judy?
I agree with you about the co-chair, I think it's worked well, but we're in different circumstances. I just wonder whether the, we certainly need SCC there. Um, does it have to be somebody from the NHS? Could it be an independent? And could we think about that?
I, I think it's up to us. Um, uh, the, 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 as Dan said, there's some things that are set in statute and they're not changed. Um, but, but beyond that, I think that's up to us. I think that's an interesting suggestion personally, I'd go there.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I think it would be helpful for people to make a specific proposal as to, to who that should be. Um.
Do you want to come to the microphone? Thank you.
Uh, just on the point of diversity, diversifying the board, can we not do diversity for the sake of diversity? It, it, if we're just trying to fill spaces and faces with different colours, that's not the issue. For me, it's about ensuring that whoever we enable to come onto this board, that they are supported, that it's an equitable and authentic approach, because it isn't just about getting faces here. It's about people that can authentically and meaningfully contribute and that we're, and that they're supported to do that because it's not just about getting people here, um, are they supported to be here as well? And that includes going through the recruitment process as well.
Thank you. We're not doing a tick box exercise, don't worry. Um, that is really important in everything we do. But, um, yes, we, we do need to decide today whether we're going for the co-chair because we need to, uh, take it to the full council, don't we? Uh, or not. Um, do we have to choose a person? Have we not asked anybody yet? Greg?
Uh, I don't think we've definitively asked anyone, floated the idea around, Judy made a really good suggestion. I wouldn't, I would dispute the validity of that suggestion. I, I think we brought, the one I'm hearing is that yes, co-chair, we've served well. And I think we should make that recommendation. I think we can see, see all the terms of reference and then deal with the details further down the line. But I do think we should pick, have a co-chair, we've always been well served.
People happy?
Yeah, I was just going to say, suggest that members could put, nominate somebody. Um, a non-exec for the, from the ICB, for example, would be a, a good nomination. But if members of the board could nominate people, that might be a way forward.
Judy?
I, I, I get that, but I wonder if there could be a more independent process, which invited applications and had a process to look at that. And I, I think it should be outside the health system, notwithstanding good people within it. That's a different message, I think, and it communicates to the wider world a different message.
Douglas?
And just thinking about, so now we go through the, going full council, the democratic process. I mean, you could say that there should be co-chairs, there should be those in terms of reference, and that one of those co-chairs should be, uh, normally from the, the city council as an elected person. Well, then that leaves it open to the board to select someone, you know, depending on who's appropriate, can rotate or whatever.
Okay, so can I recommend that we take to the city council that we want a co-chairing agreement, arrangement for this board? And that one of those co-chairs, uh, will be the chair of the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee and the other chair will be chosen by the board. And we then will decide whether we go to an external kind of, so could, maybe the steering group could take that up. Is that okay? Yep, brilliant, thank you. And can we quickly, do people need a five minutes break? Um, yeah, can we just have a very, very quick five minutes break? But five minutes, yeah. Thank you. Welcome back. Um, yeah, if we could start, uh, quickly, um, we've, we are on item 10 now. Um, and we have, um, quite a few items still to go, so we've got just over an hour. Uh, item 10, joint health and wellbeing strategy review.
Thanks, Jen. In the spirit of breaking the monotony, I won't say anything, I'll hand over to Chris, who, who led most of the work. He's got my name above it, but Chris and one of Chris's staff did most of the hard work, so Chris.
Thanks, Greg. Um, so the, the background to this is in a similar sort of space to what we've heard about the work in terms of the terms of reference around the board, et cetera. Um, but essentially this is more focused on the strategy, which was agreed in, um, March 2019, shortly before the world changed for all of us for, 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 for the interregime period. Um, uh, we've not therefore felt that delivery against the strategy or the kind of continual review of the strategy, which was talked about, um, as, as taken place. Um, uh, and, and the board has not really been well cited on progress to, towards delivering the strategy in the way that was intended. So with that in mind, Greg asked, um, my team to do what was initially scoped as a relatively light touch, um, exercise to assess whether the strategy was still fit for purpose, um, uh, and still fit to, to meet the challenges that, um, Sheffield's, um, uh, facing, uh, and what if anything needed to, to change, be updated, be refreshed, be amended uh, or straight up rewritten. Um, the, the piece of work started as a series of interviews. Many of you, um, in this room were, were subject to that interview process. Um, with, um, interviewees from the Health and Wellbeing Board, designated leads for each of the nine ambitions themselves. Um, and wider organisations, uh, leads in health areas connected and linked with the Health and Wellbeing Strategy and other anchor institutions in the city. Um, those interviews were conducted between May and June, um, of this year, um, by Lorraine Gosnell. Um, and analysis was undertaken by, um, my team principally, um, with our new Public Health Intelligence Apprentice for her Cummings. Um, the intention was that, that this work would complement the, the work that's being done on the, the wider board review. And so the conclusions of this should probably be viewed in that, in that context. So our aim broadly was to collect and then using a data-driven approach, thematically analyse, um, uh, the board views on the strategy, including the nine aims, um, performance and delivery against those, uh, nine aims of the strategy, communications and awareness of particular pieces of work that demonstrated that the board was moving the needle on those key things, including when, where, who and how. Um, a bit on membership in terms of reference, but only indirectly because we were aware of the other review, um, that Dan's been, been, and her colleagues have been leading on. And there was also some, um, uh, aims around, um, understanding what the board, um, felt around its own accountability and the visibility of the, the board itself and its membership internally and externally. Um, and it was framed around a sort of conversation which was started by a question, um, which is about what is your feeling about the delivery of the Health and Wellbeing Strategy? The degree of success in delivering against the nine core ambitions? Your critical reflection around the role of the board in the delivery of the Health and Wellbeing Strategy? Um, and that kicked off a conversation which was then guided by a series of other questions where needed. Those questions are all in appendix three of the document where we've included pretty much the, the, the full thematic analysis as we went through, um, uh, and explaining how we've, we've arrived at those conclusions. I could talk for half an hour on that, I'm not going to do that now, but the detail is there in the appendix. If anybody's got any particular questions about what we did, my contact details are on the paper, so please drop me a line. Um, what were the key findings? Well, um, starting with a positive one, um, a- according to the interview, um, which, this is huge volumes, hours and hours of conversational data and text that we went through in order to do this. And we did use, um, a lot of the sort of algorithmic approaches that social media companies use to analyse text and do the text mining. So, um, bear in mind that, um, we did take quite a data-driven, unbiased approach to this assessment. Um, broadly speaking, the overall goals and ambitions set out in the strategy were thought to be broadly right and in the right place by members of the, of the board and those interviewed. Um, but board members did raise particular concerns around how the strategy is being delivered and how board members engage and contribute towards that implementation. Um, and part of that was around communication and awareness of work that was going on. So there was a bit of tension between a perception that, um, there was a, a bit of, um, uh, under emphasis of action over rhetoric. Um, uh, whereas in reality, um, it, it was more about, um, a symptom of visibility and communication of what work was being done against the nine aims, rather than a lack of action. As there is a huge amount of work that's been, been done in, in the city across the nine aims. And, but it's, it's, it's the case that because of the pandemic and various other things, the board's just not been particularly well cited on, on those things, including a whole gamut of work around gambling, smoking, obesity, physical activity, aging well, et cetera. Um, members felt that the board should reflect on how it could be seen as a lever for action and direction. Um, and the board has a, it recognises that it has a lot of power, but it needs to use it more effectively to action change. So that's not just about writing down a strategy, um, but encouraging behavioural changes within the board and its constituent members. There isn't a programme delivery board around the, the, the Health and Wellbeing Board. Um, it, it is the board that, that forms that and it's, and it's the membership that needs to be delivering and accountable to one another against those, those nine aims. Um, other actions that were particularly identified were board members needing to take the content and outcomes of the discussions that happen at these board meetings to other meetings, conferences and, and, and touchpoints in the city and factor them into their works, see the previous point above around the fact that there is no delivery source beyond the board members, um, themselves. Organisations and partnerships, um, need to internalise the Joint Health and Wellbeing Strategy as a key strategy for the city. Um, and proactively engage, um, what they could be doing differently in, in, in order to support delivery on those aims, including reporting and bringing items for discussion to the board where appropriate. And it, obviously those issues around communications, awareness, progress on delivery, et cetera, um, are being addressed by some of the changes that Greg spoke about already around how the board is organising itself, the way in which meetings are being conducted and the particular focus of those discussions going forwards. So, um, what needs to happen next? So it's clear that, um, from the work we did, that, that there is broad support for the strategy and its aims as it is currently written. So a re- a fundamental rewrite of the strategy, it's not felt that that is needed. Um, prior to, prior to the ex, uh, the planned expiry of, of the current strategy, which is due in 2024. But the board might want to consider what a refresh and relaunch of that strategy might look like. Um, and then just some key questions for the board to consider. Um, and I would, um, put these questions in the context of the interview responses and the analysis we included in the paper. But, um, do the board fundamentally agree that no major changes are required for the strategy at this time? Are there additional things members of the board should be doing beyond the actions set out in the recent review of the board to address the concerns raised in the interviews that were undertaken? And what can board members do in their individual and corporate roles to support driving action and impact against the strategy? And I'll leave it open for discussion there.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the, the report and all the data. Um, are there any kind of, um, comments, questions? Alexis?
Uh, first of all, I think thank you for the report. I think it was really good, really thorough, um, report. And I suppose, I was just thinking about how we support the roles of Health and Wellbeing Board and exactly the ask of how do we translate what's happening into our kind of corporate roles and, and to other places. And one of the key practical thoughts I had was that what we ought to go and do with the reports that perhaps are put into the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee and also to the, to, to, to convey different governance routes. What we're doing is we're all tying it back in the golden thread to how are we also supporting the nine health and wellbeing outcomes? Because we do that in some of the other kind of context, or in a very practical basis. That's a golden thread that we can start to do across the city. So that's something I could do from, from today, for instance. And, um, you know, and it's something that might help to go and support exactly that ask is how are we translating back what we are doing? Always, always, always that together, if, if everybody's in agreement. It's perhaps a, a very practical, but, but supportive way to, to deliver upon what you're asking. upon what you're asking.
Greg?
Thanks, Jo. It's no surprise to you that I don't, I agree with the strategy is in a pretty good space and no major changes. Three thoughts. One, the strength and weakness of the strategy as is, is strategic. It's 20 pages long, and the business end of it is probably four pages long. That's a strategy. If we were to write a plan, it would be 1,000 pages long. We just don't have the capacity to do that, and let's not pretend that we do. The golden thread is health or wellbeing, whatever we want to call it, in all policies, poor quality air, poor quality housing, poor quality access to green space, matters to health just as much as NHS and social care. That's where we've always driven at this. And I think we've kind of got that right, but haven't been as visible as we probably ought to be in terms of the many good things that do happen day in, day out. In terms of pushing it on, I think there's probably something we can do to more systematically consider the commercial determination of our health. One of the reasons why we're fat is because companies sell us the wrong sort of stuff. There's no profit in big apples or big carrots. So something we can do there, we are bringing that back to the board. Are we doing all we can with regard to health in all policies in all of our committees and well beyond? Possibly, but possibly could do more. We should probably more systematically consider the key Marmot principles. People ask me how to solve health inequalities, read Mike Marmot's report, implement the end. Plenty of good stuff going on, but we don't systematically consider that. And I think there's something that we could do. I said these are going to be jobs I have to do, but I ain't going to do them by myself. But I think there are some things that we could be doing to be a little bit more systematic against the, testing ourselves against the Marmot principles. Stop there.
Judy?
Chris, I'm not sure whether you're saying something separately about the pharmaceutical needs assessment.
Yes, I am.
Right, okay, I'll wait.
Catherine?
It's similar to Alexis, really happy to look at how we can more systematically look at the ambitions in the project plans and the programme plans that we're developing over the sort of Sheffield Place Partnership landscape, and then work out how we feed that into any annual reporting or things. But I think we kind of do think about it, but you're right, we don't communicate that and we don't feed it back to you guys, so I'm happy to do that.
And same for me. I think we do it, we just don't record it and communicate it. Because, you know, but from having, I'm the Chair of this board, but also the Chair of the Adult Health and Social Care, I'm also on the S and R Committee. And of course, all these, the strategy comes up, but it's not quoted and systematically, you know, highlighted. And maybe we just need to be better at saying, by the way, you know, yeah, have a golden thread, it just makes sense, we just have to be more explicit about it.
Pulling the sort of the review of the strategy as is, is kind of done. One of the things I was intending to do, I've not quite got it over the line yet, is a short paper for the Strategy and Resources, for our Strategy and Resources Committee, may well have uses beyond, that describes the totality of the city's strategy for health. Won't go into detail, it is based on the Health and Wellbeing Strategy, but kind of brings it to life a little bit, a little bit less dryly than it currently is.
And I suppose elements of it, of the strategy are in the corporate plan that the council has, but it's not, you know, it's just people. We don't bring it back here and say this is what's happening in other places. Is there anything else people want to add? So are we just happy with taking the report and agreeing that the strategy is fine in terms of the content, but we want to improve the communication and how we are actually using the strategies in the other contexts that we are all busy with? Is that what we want to do? Thank you. Item 11, Chris, I think it's you again, isn't it?
Chris, intro done. I feel a bit left out now. Right, so I'm going to talk about the Joint Strategic Needs Assessment and the Pharmaceutical Health Needs Assessment, which is a subset of our JSNA and various other needs assessments that we do. But I'm just going to start with the JSNA. We are undertaking a refresh and relaunch of our Joint Strategic Needs Assessment. Just to remind you, the purposes of the Joint Strategic Needs Assessment is to provide the single point of truth and repository for all data on health inequalities, health activity outcomes, public health outcomes framework type information, with the aim of highlighting where the kind of key inequalities are in the city, and then formulate plans of action for what might be done to address those. JSNAs are never finished, they are live documents, which is why we've always held ours online. And it's a continual piece of work that we update as new information comes available. But the outputs from the JSNA and all the evidence that it produces, the analysis of needs, the agreed priorities, should be used to help formulate the priorities of structures such as this board, NHS partnership boards, and other groups in the city, and address key conversations around wider determinants of health and impact on health and wellbeing. And therefore, it has a key role to play in formulating the Health and Wellbeing Strategy. And I know that the nine aims that were identified in the strategy were, at least in a broad part, identified by conclusions of our previous Joint Strategic Needs Assessment work. The Sheffield JSNA was set up by Louise Bruins and the Sheffield City Council Public Health Intelligence Team. It's been nationally recognised for a number of years as an excellent JSNA in terms of both its content and its format. But I said it was being continually reviewed and developed. It's fair to say that over the last two years, we've not done an awful lot of work on it because there was other things happening that was taking up our attention and our resource. It was built around a model of self-service and co-authorship, and I think the intention was always that we were going to invite other portfolios and other groups to contribute to the JSNA chapters. That never really happened, and it became something that the Public Health Intelligence Team, which is a very small team, there's only four of us, had to then develop for the whole city. So it's not really sustainable in its current format. Also, issues around software and online hosting and accessibility, which need review. And also crucially, one of the most important data sets underpinning the JSNA, which is the new census data, is going to be arriving at small geography level in the new year. And that will underpin all of the information that we have on our JSNA, including more detailed information on demographics and ethnicity than we've been able to incorporate previously. So we've proposed a new model for our JSNA. On the one hand, it's going to be an A to Z directory with links to all of the regional thinking about ICS and ICB geographies, et cetera, and national evidence around data around individual topics through an A to Z that can be easily accessed online, self-service driven, open data, a kind of if we can share it, we will attitude, underpinning it all, using our new Local Insights tool, which was, which is a product where we've been incorporating spatial visualisation of the core data sets within the JSNA. I'd invite members to look at that resource if they've not done so already. And then all of the blue cover reports, key documents, things that we produce every year, National Childhood Management Programme, et cetera, et cetera, linked underneath that A to Z directory. There will be some deep dives, and I think that the deep dives themselves will form, if you like, an overarching JSNA, which will be built around the Marmot themes that Greg has been talking about, with a particular focus on issues like multimorbidity, cost of living, best start in life, et cetera, et cetera. What I would like to do is have an item on a future agenda for the Health and Wellbeing Board, where we bring in a live demo of the JSNA and actually talk people through it interactively. So if we could get that on the agenda for a future meeting, I'd be grateful. And I think broadly speaking, that's it. But just to reiterate that behind, we'll have an A to Z structure that will be online and it will be very visual and it'll be very interactive, but there will be an overarching, more strategic JSNA, if you like, which will be built around multimorbidity, health inequalities and the need for disproportionate distribution of resources, services and assets, a community-centric approach to intelligence, so perhaps focusing and including more of the qualitative data that we've so far not been able to include in traditional JSNAs. So a lot more kind of experiential stories from people and communities. Mental health, especially children's and mental health, cost of living crisis. And I think all of that will be underpinned and informed by both the public health outcomes framework, the fingertips framework, but also the citywide outcomes framework that Sandy's been developing. I'll pause there before I go on to the PNA and just take questions on the JSNA.
Any questions on that part of the report, presentation? Go for it, Chris.
Okay, so the PNA update. About 18 months ago, we were asked when we were going to be producing a PNA, and we said we can't do one, we just, we just haven't got the resource to do it. And then we decided, or rather Louise, decided that we would do a kind of minimal viable products approach to the PNA with an expectation that we wouldn't be able to do the level of community consultation on the PNA than we had perhaps wanted to do pre-pandemic. And I think it's fair to say that what we ended up with was far beyond a minimum viable product. It was a full-blown PNA, but if there's one weakness of the PNA, I think that we were not really able, because of resource constraints, to do a proper community-based consultation. I think it's important that we recognise that the PNA in its current format is probably not likely to be repeated because all of the NHS geographies that underpin it have now changed. So I'm talking with colleagues in the ICS ICB around what the future of pharmaceutical needs assessment is. And I will be, as part of those conversations, emphasising the need that we do a proper community-based pharmaceutical needs assessment, which is perhaps quite different from the NHS England prescribed model of what a PNA should be. But briefly, just to touch on the conclusions of the PNA that we did. The PNA found that Sheffield's well-served by pharmacies and dispensing doctors, good coverage and choice across the city, no key inequalities were identified, good links between pharmacy and other NHS services in the city, both in relation to primary care, especially GP practices and acute hospital services. But integrated primary care services was an area that was identified for development, both in the consultation feedback that we had and in some of the data that we looked at. Local pharmacies already contributing extensively to raising awareness and understanding of health risks, promoting healthy lifestyles, providing advice and signposting referral to treatment and providing services, often in more accessible and acceptable settings. We shouldn't underestimate the work that was done by pharmacies and primary care in responding to COVID, and we did highlight that in the needs assessment. And I like to reiterate that as a matter of record here, particularly on the vaccination effort, the role that primary care and community pharmacy played in that vaccine rollout, and tackling some of the inequalities that we heard about in an earlier presentation today. I think it's, we can't underestimate the significance of that, it saved lives. Looking a bit further ahead, the PNA, as in previous editions of the PNA, found that demographic and cost pressures, primarily driven by patients with increasing complexity, long-term conditions, multimorbidity, that's only likely to get worse in coming years. And pharmacy's continued role in helping to meet that need is very much acknowledged by the report. I think it's fair to say that known future or other developments are unlikely to generate significant need for additional pharmaceutical provision over the lifetime of this current PNA, however, with the exception of the possibility of another COVID-19 set of response measures, which might be needed again to provide testing, vaccination, support to vulnerable people. So as far as recommendations to the board go, the board should note the completed PNA is now available online. We were able to meet the final publication deadline on the first of October. The report is hosted on the JSNA website, there is a link in the paper to where the paper and the consultation results are posted. Those consultation comments have been responded to and published in full. And I would reiterate that the board should consider this is likely to be the last PNA we'll be doing in the current form, and future publications are likely to be at ICS geographies following the dissolution of the CCGs. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Oh, Judy?
Thanks, Chris. I get the constraints on producing the PNA. Health Watch is finding issues around, around this are coming up quite fast. So I know that you have done some consultation. I think if you're doing some further tailored consultation, it would be great if you talked to us about some of the issues that people are bringing up. So I think that experience that people have on the ground is important to feed into any future iterations of this, and indeed how this is rolled out.
Just very briefly come back on that. Yeah, I agree, we're having conversations with Barbara Coyle at the ICB around how we do a proper job of the consultation for the next iteration of the PNA. And also whether we need to look at the current makeup of the kind of working group around the PNA, which is very internal at the moment, to, previously it was SEC, NHS development. I think if we're going to do a proper community-based pharmaceutical needs assessment, we need to be bringing in voluntary sector colleagues, et cetera, into that to get a better sense of the qualitative information they have around need.
Thank you. Greg?
Chris, I'm not sure that the link to the PNA is going around members of the board, so can you just sort that outside? But specifically, and to kind of respond to Judy, I should name check Joe Sonova in what was the organisation formerly known as the CCG, who did some amazing work in this space. I'm pretty clear that my team will not be doing any more work in this space, data-oriented, lived experience-oriented, community engagement-oriented. We can't, and we are not the commissioner of community pharmacy, never have been. So I'll punt that directly to NHS England, who aren't here to answer for themselves. But if we want to do that job properly, that has to be resourced by the commissioner for NHS, for community pharmacy, which isn't us, sorry.
Thank you, Greg, for that clarification, it's really important. Are there any other questions or comments? Alexis?
Firstly, I just want to say thank you for the JSNA, I found a link, I thought it was really quite helpful to read. Particularly thinking about the influence of other strategies across the city and that kind of golden thread, coming back to the previous point. And for me, I think that there's a question about how we use this in practice to inform and target what we are doing as we go forward. But also, secondly, I'm going to raise the same point here as I raised at the SYB, Integrated Care Partnership, I've got that right now, last week, is it really interesting because the data shows that increase in complexity of need ultimately, but set against a depreciation of resources. And the question for me is, is how do we put a GDP value, for want of a better word, on some of this information? Because actually, we've got to start to think about what does this actually mean in our real, real long-term forecasts, as well as what does this mean in terms of how we need to think about our investments and our target, strategic investments for the city? So I just thought I'd raise the same point here as what I raised at the partnership last week, because these are some of the critical things perhaps we need to think about as a city, as we're starting to think about how we're going to invest our resources collectively together.
Yeah, I completely agree. I'd also emphasise that that gradient of increasing complexity and multimorbidity is skewed very, very strongly towards more deprived areas of the city as well. And therefore, is probably an underestimate of the true level of need, because we know there's under-diagnosis and other issues at play there as well, and issues around access and equity. So yeah, absolutely, completely agree.
Thank you. And I'm going to close that item there, and we can move on to 12, 10 minutes max.
I'll make it five. Thanks, Jo. So you have to listen to me drone on again. I'm not going to re-explain the new architecture of the NHS, you'll be pleased to know. But one of the bits of the new architecture is the South Yorkshire Integrated Care Partnership, the ICP. The paper is there, it's self-explanatory, sets itself out, it was written a while ago actually, and there's a short cover note. So the ICP is established, it is met once, it met last Friday. I think all the Health and Wellbeing Board chairs were there, ICB Chair, ICB Chief Exec was there, South Yorkshire Medical Authority Mayor is the Chair of the thing, and fairly strong representation from Voluntary Community Sector as well, I think it's fair to say. Its purpose is to Its purpose is to form a strategy for the ICB, and that's its sole, not quite sole, but one of its main purposes, reasonably long conversation about what that might look like, that will be comprised of the four place based health and wellbeing strategies. Each place will say its health and wellbeing strategy is the right thing for it, we've had a conversation about ours today, so we won't be writing a brand new strategy, we'll be writing something that's comprised of what four strategies already exist. Some tricky questions which are as yet unanswered on the capacity to do this at South Yorkshire level of geography, we can just about service the capacity needed for Sheffield, sometimes it's a struggle, can't serve multiple levels of geography, so we're unsure how we'll address that one. Possibly some areas where working at South Yorkshire level will add value. The paper in the pack that's there that explains the ICP was developed by local authorities' chief execs, I think all the Health and Wellbeing Board chairs and the DPH had a hand in that. The ask is that Health and Wellbeing Boards nominate five people from each place, doesn't necessarily have to be members of the Health and Wellbeing Board. Currently, as a stopgap measure, Sheffield's nominated the Chair, the DPH and the DAS. You may choose to endorse those three people, or you may choose to sack us, that's your call, but ideally, we want, we want five people, and there's a discussion to be had around whether that's the usual suspects, and what we've got now, the Chair, the DAS and the DPA clearly are the usual suspects, or whether we want fresh voices and fresh perspectives, so I'll pause there.
Thank you. Can I just add something? We had the first ICP meeting on Friday, and we were the only one of the local authorities who hadn't put forward five names already. That being because this meeting had not happened yet, so we couldn't really take five names because we couldn't agree. So we do need to make a decision about how we go about, how we choose people and who we want the five people to be.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to emphasise the point that the ICP was established as part of the requirements of the Health and Care Act, which is to complement the established place based working and the partnerships that we already have in Sheffield. So it really is about establishing those relationships and tackling those issues that are needed to be tackled at a larger level and a bigger area. So please don't feel that it's something that is all in contradiction to the Health and Wellbeing Board in Sheffield, it is really to complement that and have a look at issues that on the wider scale. One of the main themes that I've run across today's meeting is the voice of our communities, and as representatives of Sheffield Health and Wellbeing Board, it really is to make sure that we've got our voice of our communities in that integrated care partnership. So I really want to emphasise, you know, the need of having those nominated people on that board.
And that is something that we definitely talked about, in fact, I was just looking at my notes of the names or areas that I scribbled down, and Alexis has seen my list. So yeah, I think we can think after the box, I don't think we need to restrict ourselves to this board, but we do need to have some names, so any kind of suggestions? Julie and Catherine?
I really agree with Sandy, I think it's important to have some people from outside the system who've got different and diverse perspectives. I think we picked up through a number of reports, various groupings that could probably produce those two people. I wonder if the strategy group could look at those and think about some suggestions and push that back here for endorsement.
I think we may have to decide quicker than that, Greg, do you want?
I'm personally, well, one, I'm relaxed if the board choose to sack me, very happy. Not necessarily looking for more meetings to go to, I won't get away with it one way or the other, but the ask is that Health and Wellbeing Boards not nominate five people from that place as soon as possible. As Angela said, we haven't done it here because of just the scheduling of the meetings. I'd rather not wait, so I'd rather get some names over the next week or so, which can be ratified outside of the meeting, but I think we should just get on with it. I wouldn't overthink it, to be honest.
Dan?
I mean, one option, I think this is considering what Greg's just said, is that the board could delegate the task to the steering group, and on the basis that they will be sort of interim to be confirmed in December if you are comfortable with that, rather than sort of trying to thrash it out in this space right now.
Catherine?
It'd be helpful to know who's on that group from the broader South Yorkshire footprint, so we can make sure we've got representation from maybe what's missing, so is there children and families represented already, or do we want to nominate someone from that space? I had the housing conversation earlier today, do we want to put someone in there from housing? And so if we could get sight of who's already on it, we could maybe plug some gaps.
I thought it was in the paper, it's not, I have that somewhere, I can't find it, but I've got it to hand.
I have it somewhere as well, so between us, it's in the papers from last meetings. All those things came up, and it looks like you looked on my list from that meeting. So do we want to delegate to the steering group to come up with, with the five, are people happy with the three people on there already? Do you want to say something on that? Do you want Greg to look at his face? Do you want Greg to be on there? Well, the other public health directors are there, Greg, so I'm very keen for you to be there, sorry, Friday afternoon meetings for you. Dan, could you kind of send an action out so that we don't forget about it? Thank you. Right. Item twelve, Better Care Fund.
I think, am I introducing you or Sandy introducing you? Right, well, I am. Well, Martin is the new manager of the Better Care Fund, relatively new in post, so treat him gently. In time under tradition, one of the responsibilities of the board is to agree the Better Care Fund, I think at every meeting we have updates on the Better Care Fund, haven't had them for a while, Jenny Millner was in the post for quite a long time and has left, and Martin is the new Jenny, but he won't say kindly, it's been called the new Jenny for very long, so over to Martin.
Thank you. And as Greg said, I'm Martin Smith, I'm the Deputy Director of Planning and Joint Commissioning, and I work to Sandy in the Integrated Care Board Sheffield Place, but I've got a role across health and care, and one of those roles is to pull together the Better Care Fund plan on behalf of the Health and Wellbeing Board. Just wanted to give you an update in terms of what we have to do recently, which the submission date for the plan was the 26th, so last Friday. So this is just a short assurance update that we have met everything that was put in front of us, but with a commitment to bring in a more detailed report about what the Better Care Fund means and what we've done, the targets that we've set in this plan, bringing those back to tell you where we are. So essentially, an overview, although you might have seen some and heard a lot about this before, but it is mandatory. So it's the government's national vehicle for driving health and social care integration, requires the ICB and the local authority to pull a joint fund. Sheffield's got a long history of joint working, we pull an excessively higher amount than the minimum, demonstrates the longstanding partnership and what we're doing on the ground with our teams. The guidance was set on the 19th of July, so the turnaround time wasn't extensive, and the guidance said that you can pull from existing plans, so that is what we've done, pulled from a lot of existing work that's happening, and we've met all the key lines of inquiry that were put in front of us, referenced some of the great work that's happening. The two main policy end of the Better Care Fund, linked to everything that's been said, and being new to Sheffield, I was really excited to hear the work that's going on, that I can take this forward, reference some of the great work around compassion, around equality. Two bits mainly around keeping people safe at home, independent, how the teams on the ground between health and care, health coaches, everything we've got around social prescribing, around people having, you know, top quality housing, feeling safe, green spaces, all the wider determinant elements are there, around, you know, not having those in place mean people won't need to access our services. And the second part really is around a really efficient process when people do need health and care going into hospital, around an MDT decision about how we get people home first, and around if they do need ongoing care and support, how teams between health and care and voluntary sector coordinate their response to make sure that people are safe and well at home, and the plan is based and linked to the health and wellbeing strategy around everything we want to do. So this should be the golden thread that we were describing earlier around how the JSNA and the needs of the population are being met through teams working on the ground, formulated through the Better Care Fund. Effectively, just, there was only a couple of changes this year than what's normal. One, they asked for really a strengthened narrative on what we're doing to support unpaid carers, and we worked with the local authority team on that, to put that narrative in around everything we're doing, referenced it all, and it has been through an iteration through NHS England's assurance, and they're happy with the information we've put in. I think in the next round, we can do more on that as well, in terms of case studies, real life examples, bringing it together. There's also something new that was required is to map what our intermediate care capacity was, so the intermediate care is, you know, if you're discharged from hospital but you can't quite go home yet, you need more support, some more therapy, some more rehabilitation time, so what have we got there for moving people before they go home supported, and potentially moving people from the community up to those to avoid a hospital admission? We had to put a return in around that, so we worked jointly across health and care teams to make sure we had it in. They've also removed the measure that they did have previously around length of stay in the hospital, what was previously known as super stranded, those staying fourteen to twenty one days in hospital, taken that out of the targets, but they have asked that hospital trusts improve the data quality in this area, and it will be a target next year, so I believe they will extract it and come back to us and say, this is what we believe your target should be, although it's not, that's not confirmed yet. So as I said, the Sheffield Better Care Fund plan is linked to the healthcare partnership plan, and shaping Sheffield, the vision for 2030, all around reducing inequalities, how teams work on the ground, to be personalised, to listen to people, to coordinate ourselves and get the best resources at the right time for the right, in the right place. And we kept the schemes, as I said, it was a short turnaround, so we did have a plan from last year, so there's a number of services in the Better Care Fund, it is a huge fund. It doesn't include children's services, that's national, you know, they asked us not to, but that doesn't mean that children's services aren't part of our plan for how we work on the ground, it's just this scheme, this Better Care Fund scheme is adults only. So what we've got are an urgent care scheme around how we support people urgently in the community to keep them out of hospital, keeping people well again, around some of the social care grants, some of the voluntary sector work we're doing, supporting people to get home, getting equipment to people, a lot of the befriending, links with advocacy, reactive support and recovery around, that's the intermediate care element, that's the rehabilitation teams, the health and care teams working on the ground to keep people well, keep people supported and get them back to their optimum. And ongoing care, mental health is a big scheme in here, independent living, which is mainly the equipment services, so the equipment service budget is in here, and the disabled facilities grant is within the Better Care Fund, and it's mandated to be put in the Better Care Fund around adaptations in people's homes. And there's a strong element on housing, included Greg's seminar work in our plan around health and housing links, around disabled facilities grant, they're all within the Better Care Fund. And it was agreed at the previous meeting, because the submission date was before this meeting, that the delegated authority was to the Chair, so we've worked through that and got the sign off on the 26th, so the plan has been submitted, and we'll share it round afterwards for comments, I'm sorry you haven't been able to see it yet, it was just the tight deadlines, but you'll be able to see and comment on it. There's four measures within the Better Care Fund, and sorry if it's a bit tiny here, it's effectively two measures that are proxy measures, that NHS England and Department Health and Social Care believe are proxy for how well we're doing as a system. One is avoidable admissions, so those with long term conditions going in as a non elective admission into hospital, that is a proxy measure for how we're supporting people with conditions in the community to stay at home and not need hospitalisation. The second one, and we've used the tool provided by the Better Care Fund to set that target. The second one is around the percentage of people we do discharge home, so that is very high, around ninety eight percent, so that is a really good thing in Sheffield, that the figure is really high that we get people home. And we've kept that target the same, because that is, when we benchmarked against others, a really good one. The other two indicators are from the Adult Social Care Outcomes Framework, one being the effectiveness of rehabilitation services, which again is high, and worked with Alexis' team to make sure that that target accurately reflected what's happening on the ground, the expanded recruitment team, what we're doing. We might, we might be harder than ourselves because we don't have a strict criteria for who that team accepts, so other areas might do, so the people with more recruitment potential will be at home ninety days after the services, but if we see lots of people, that means that some of them might not have, so the target is realistic for what we currently do. And the rate of admissions into residential care, that is private funders and social care funded, that figure plummeted because of Covid, with the, we didn't want to put people into care homes with Covid virus pandemic without all the IPC, so we did a big focus on putting people back home and putting home care support in. Now, that's coming back up again, so the target is slightly higher than the figures last year, and that reflects the realistic numbers of how many people we believe in Sheffield actually need care, again, working through the teams in social care. And just finally, just the breakdown of the Better Care Fund, it is with adults, a £456 million fund, including the minimums I put in, so disabled facilities grant, the minimum NHS contribution was around £45 million, and the minimum social care contribution was £29 million. The rest that make up is other services that we believe are working together jointly to support residents in terms of what's delivered in Sheffield, and we've, as I say, we've submitted that plan now, we'll get feedback on it in a few months to say if the plan has been assured, and the next stage is to agree and sign off the Section 75 agreement between the ICB and the council as a formality, and work towards with the refreshed JSNA and the fresh health and wellbeing strategy, a document that reflects all the work that's going on this year for next year. Thank you.
Are there any questions or any comments, Greg?
Just a comment, I've said this before, the performance measures, you said they're good proxies, I think they're pretty poor proxies, to be honest. I know that's not your fault, they're set nationally, but bluntly, they're pretty crappy proxies and don't really amount to very much. There's a bit of measurable versus important in there, but those performance measures perpetuate a status quo, which is about chasing demand, not getting upstream of demand. Dear the machine, please change. I've said it before, I know I'll say it again, but it's a perpetual bugbear of mine.
Alexis?
First of all, thank you to the team behind us who did the work, because I've just said, there was a huge amount of people across health and social care who supported completion of the report, and just want to kind of do a shout out to some of the colleagues who really did a huge amount of work at quite a fast pace to get this undertaken, and it's a good reflection of where we're at. In terms of the data, myself, I'd spoke to the kind of national managers around the BCF, around just to gain my own assurances, because obviously I'm the accountable officer for the council for this, and one of the key things for me is around how we tally up the data in the future to our local data and outcomes, because we have got a lot of local outcome measures that we've been working on, and that have a meaningful impact about what's the impact on people, which is always a key thing for me, that's so kind of, so what question, which is what we should come out with in terms of that joint funding that we have. So I think, you know, I just want to kind of, so first of all, I just want to say three things, you know, absolutely endorsing the work of the, you know, the support and the work of the team and the group behind that, and also the report, and big thanks to Martin for really pulling it together and kind of getting to a good place for going forward. But secondly, to think about, you know, it's come to the Adult Social Care Policy Committee in November as well for scrutiny and for discussion, and one of the key things that is a real opportunity to do is within that, is to think about how we get the governance in the future around a Better Care Fund, and then secondly, the tie in to the kind of local outcomes as well as the national outcomes and going forward, so that we get absolutely evidence impact on people, which is what we want to do ultimately as Sheffield.
Thanks, Alexis. I've got Lee and then Sandy. Thanks Alexis. I've got Lee and then Sandy.
Hi, yes, thanks Martin, very much for your presentation, that was really helpful. My question is sort of similar to Alexis in a way, it's about outcomes, I was quite intrigued, and you may not know the answer to this, because it doesn't relate directly to the Better Care Fund, but I was just intrigued on the comment about the number of people going into residential care that was avoided intentionally because of the risk of Covid and how that's crept up, and I'm just interested in the outcomes that we might have learned from that in terms of, one, financial outcomes, but also people's experience, and I wonder if you've got any information on that?
I haven't got any information on that, but we can, I suppose we've met the key lines of inquiry put forward now in terms of what we need to put in, but I think in the iteration of this and the development of this going forward, I think that's exactly right. I think we need to capture local outcomes, we need to capture any lessons learnt in terms of what does this mean and what have we done in light of things that we know now that, you know, through outside of Covid. So I think in the next iteration of this, we can definitely do that, what have we learnt?
Yeah, because it would be very easy to return to the status quo, which looks, that trend looks if that could happen, and it would be a shame to miss out on what we could have gained from our crisis.
Thank you. I have Lee and then Chris to conclude.
Thank you Chair, I just wanted to reiterate the thanks to the team, Martin literally has just started with us and hit the ground running, so thank you to you and the team, and I just wanted to reaffirm, even with the massive changes that we know has happened within the NHS and within the council, this plan and committing the additional contributions between both organisations really reaffirms what we're trying to do in Sheffield in that integrated partnership approach and working together across health and care, so it really is fantastic work, and there's lots of things we need to do, lots of things we need to improve on, but really just affirms what we're trying to do in Sheffield.
Thank you. Chris?
Thank you Chair. On the people keeping well side of things, a question about what, it says the service, expanding the service offer, what's it expanding into? A bit more detail on that would be useful to know, but also, how do we make sure that the people keeping well stuff framed in the context of the fact that we've got a 20-year gap in healthy life expectancy in the city, how do we avoid that making that worse, or at best not moving the needle on it?
I think I'm happy to share more detail exactly what's behind that right now, but I want to do that piece of work as well. That's one thing, you know, to take it apart a bit and say, if our joint strategic needs assessment shows this, and the disparity between, you know, how long people live in this, what are we doing? And what schemes directly target to that, and I think that's the sort of, trying to tie it all up in terms of the golden thread around, if inequalities are right up there, which of these schemes are doing it and how they're working together, and the refreshed JSNA will help inform some of that. So that is it, that's exactly, I want to make it intelligence-led and do a bit of a take it apart and see, is this exactly what we want for next year?
Thank you, and thank you Martin, and thank you for working with me over the weekend to get it signed off, and you might have noticed lots of the things that have been said today, things we were discussing on Monday, and it's, you know, it's good to hear the same things in different forms, because we are working in partnership, so it's good that we are all kind of saying very similar things or the same things in different meetings and with different groups of people. So thank you, and thank you to the team for putting it together.
Thank you.
Let's move on to a forward plan, item 14, Dan, I think? Or is it Greg?
Last from me, you don't want to listen to me drone on, the forward plan's attached in the pack. The December meeting's looking pretty busy, of note, there's lots of papers that have got my name against them, so at risk of me not droning on all the time, there is a much longer, long list which isn't in the pack. I want suggestions from members of the board as to what you want to talk about, otherwise it will be me droning on and you really, really, really will get bored. The other thing I'd bring to your attention is we talked a little bit about the Housing Summit, climate, similar events around climate and its impact on health and wellbeing, is being planned and date's been set for 15th of November at some merries, more details to follow, but put that in your diaries.
Thank you. And so suggestions for what we want on the forward plan from people would be very much appreciated. Thank you. Item 15, I mean, it's our previous meeting, so if you've not seen them, there's copies here at the front, sorry, I should have said at the beginning of the meeting, if people had sighted them, whoever the meeting, yeah, of the minutes, can we agree that they are a true record, first of all, of the meeting? Are there any matters arising? I've got a couple. So page one, page two, for six, there is something about, Douglas asked about a list of dentists that will accept NHS patients. I don't believe we've had an answer about that, but could that be part of the December meeting if we could get like a response by then? Would that be?
Sorry, the list of who that accepts NHS patients, dentists? Yeah, it's on oral health, it's on the December agenda. I'm desperate that the December agenda item on oral health doesn't talk about dentistry, it talks about oral health, of which dentistry is a part, but yes, is the answer to the question.
I think this is about access to dentists, so actually similar point to what Judy raised before. A lot of dentists advertising that they're taking on NHS patients when they're not really, and who supervises that list and those claims.
My matter arising was the fact that we haven't had an answer, and we asked the question last time, so it would be good to have an answer. Page three, page four, I have a question for Greg. Seven, five, it talks about a worsening, you know, situation with Covid-19 in the autumn, and I just wanted to ask if that is still the case, taking into account that Covid has completely disappeared from the news?
Likely to be the case. I did a Covid weather forecast for various people on, earlier this week, I'll circulate the detail to members of the board, but TDLR, likely to be a further wave into the autumn, timing is uncertain, it's on the backdrop of, you know, Covid hasn't gone away, I think estimates are 1% of the population at the moment, which is a lot lower than it has been at the height of some waves, but it's creating problems now, and Sarah may be able to, she's nodding, so she's creating problems in hospital, that's only going to continue, it will get worse, add into that flu, if those two things happen concurrently, it's going to be a very, 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 very difficult winter for the NHS and social care machine, it's already going to be a quite difficult winter because they're at the back end of two and a half years of working at 100%, so the machine is exhausted actually, the clinicians that work within it are exhausted, it won't take much to tip it over the edge. So, but I'll do the detailed Covid weather forecast by email.
Thank you. Sorry, I hope it's already ready so you don't have to do more work for us. Are there any other matters arising for other people? No. So date of next meeting is the 8th of December, here at Town Hall, 9:30 in the morning. Can I thank everybody for attending, being sufficient, thank you Alan for the technical support, and see you next time.